...will be given by Reverend Kyle Tremblay, Associate Pastor, First United Methodist Church. There you are. And if everyone would please silence your cellphone, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please go to God with me. Wonderful God, we thank you for this day where we can discuss your community, where we can lift up the people all around us. We ask you right now, Lord, just to give us the guidance that we need to hear your voice, to find the best ways that we can love this community, that we can share this light with each other, and so that we might be a blessing for all those around us. God, you have been so good to us. We just ask that you continue to give us your blessings and guide us this day and all of our days. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag. We will start with roll call.
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner. Councilmember Duryo.
Here.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Here.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Sherwood. And Councilmember Crenshaw.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. With that, right before we go into public comments, I just want to go on record thanking our council for us being here, talking about the first bond election in 43 years for the city, and the opportunity to make some real progress in many areas of the city. And thank you to city manager and the staff and all the work that's been put in on this. And we're moving kind of fast and furious and getting lots of numbers, and we're going through lots today. So just keep in mind, but I am grateful to God for this council and this city administration for all their hard work and willingness to be here today. And with that, we're going to have public comments. And citizens, you may speak on any of these agenda items or any other topic. You're going to have three minutes, by the way. When you walk up, the red light will come, I mean, the green light will come on. And when your three minutes is up, the red light will come on. And we're not going to be able to respond to what you're saying while you're at the podium now. If it's items that we're discussing today, we'll obviously be talking about them here shortly. So with that, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir. Jeray Rito, 2308 Euclid, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello. So my name is Jeray Rito, born and raised in Beaumont, Texas, in the south area of Beaumont. Did move to the west of the city for about two years, but pretty much spent all our life on the south. I've been a volunteer coach in the community for about 25 years now. Started when I was 14. I have watched, you know, back when we were coming up, there were a lot of things for us to do, a lot of for the kids in the community. We had places to go, things to do. We were able to walk, ride our bikes, things like that, to the Y and all the different facilities and places that we had to go. What I wanted to speak on today really is just trying to make sure that we have something in the south for the kids in the south to do. There are a lot of children that are being raised by grandparents, single home parents, things like that, that, you know, and parents have to work and things, so they're not able to provide the transportation for the kids to get to different areas. You know, the bond is awesome. Congratulations on that. That's a very good thing for us to have in the city. But we also want to try to make sure that we do have something in the south that, you know, that we can, even if we're able to help provide transportation, we can get them there. They don't have to worry about trying to move out, you know, through the streets and things like that because it's not as safe as it used to be when we were coming up. And that's not just the kids, it's the adults also. They have to duck and dodge, unfortunately stray bullets and all those things like that. So I think it would be a wonderful thing if we were able to implement something and get something on the south so that our kids can feel like they have somewhere to go. They won't feel so unsafe moving throughout the streets to be able to get downtown or get all the way down to College Street and things like that. So that was just what I wanted to speak on today.
Thank you.
Jocelyn Vaughn, 4855 Rice Circle, Beaumont, Texas. Good afternoon, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jocelyn Vaughn. I live here. My daughter lives here. My husband was raised here. I'm speaking for the south end. And for Coach Rito, what about the children? Because our cries have been ignored for far too long. People keep asking, what are we going to do with these children? They call them out of control, but they are not out of control. They are crying for help. Right now, our city has only one recreational center, and it's not in our neighborhood. The few programs that exist are too far, too expensive, or too limited to the kids, to keep the kids engaged. Buses are unreliable and unsafe. Walking is risky with child abductions on the rise. So what's left? The streets? And we all know the streets will take them before opportunity ever will. When our kids grow up, they leave taking their skills, their potential, their future somewhere else. Our community loses twice. Once when they're children with nowhere to go, and again when they're adults who never come back. This city is prepared to invest 55 million in a police station, 7 million in a fire station, 6 million in an animal shelter, all important. But our children are worth at least that much. And right now, they have nothing. We don't need another prison. We need a place that builds our kids, protects them, and reminds them they matter. I'm asking you, no, I am urging you, to fund and build a recreational facility in the south end because people invest in what they believe in, and we believe in our future. The children hear the cries of the people or feel the wrath of God himself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeanette Rito, 2215 Euclid, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette Rito. I have lived in Beaumont, Texas for all of my 64 years. I've seen this city grow. I've seen families thrive. And I've also seen the slow downfall of our community. The opportunities drying up, the safe spaces disappearing, the support of our young people fading away. Let me give you a picture of where we are today. Here in Jefferson County, we have three state recreational facilities, the Guest State Jail, the Stiles Unit, and the LeBlanc Unit. And just outside the city limits, we have a massive federal prison complex with low, medium, and high security facilities. Together, these places have the capacity to hold nearly 9,000 inmates. 9,000. Now let me tell you how many public recreation centers this city has for our youth. One, one recreational facility for our entire city. One place where kids can go to play, learn, and grow in a safe environment. We have built more capacity to lock people up than to lift people up. When I was younger, we had places to go. We had places to belong. There were community events, youth programs, and mentors who would make sure you had what we needed. Not sure to survive, but to dream. Now our children are growing up in a city where they're more likely to pass by a prison and a graveyard than a youth center. They are more likely to see flashing blue lights than a mentor's encouraging smile. We have children who don't know how to fill out a college application, how to apply for financial aid, or what trade programs are out there for them. I have lived long enough to see what happens when we stop investing in our young people. I've seen the cycle. A child with no support turns into a teenager with no direction, who turns into an adult with no opportunities. And too often, that story ends behind those prison walls. But I've also seen the other side. I've seen what happens when we care enough to invest. When we create safe spaces, when we give kids something to be proud of, when we teach them who they are and what they can be, they flourish. They find purpose. They give back. They break the cycle. And I want to be clear, that is not about charity. This is about responsibility. This is about deciding what kind of city Beaumont is going to be. Are we going to be the city that builds more sales? Or the city that builds more dreams? Well, we used to be known as the football capital of the world. You can talk to some higher government people, and you introduce yourself to them, and they tell you, and you tell them where you're from, and they were like, oh, the prison capital of the world.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Jamesia Jones, 4345 Cadillac Lane, Beaumont, Texas. Jamisia, I'm so sorry. I was going to ask you if that was inaccurate.
Good evening. My name is Jamisia Jones, and I am here today speaking to the Beaumont City Council. Not as a politician, not as a business owner, but as someone who was once labeled a bad kid. I was suspended for simply talking after I had already finished my work. I was misunderstood, written off, and completely let down in my own hometown. My family and I have been a part of Beaumont community our entire lives. Thanks to my father, Stephen Jones, and people like Prentice Simeon, the sole owner and CEO of Cracklin Kings, who has been serving this community for nearly a decade. People like Darryl Jones, who alongside my dad created AAU basketball team for the kids of this city. And today, my brother plays professional basketball in Germany, living proof of what happens when you invest in your youth. How do I know what's possible when you invest in kids? Because I've lived it. I've seen what happens when you give young people opportunity, structure, and love. I was failed, but when I was placed in a better environment, I flourished. At 23 years old, here's my resume. I graduated in the middle of my class of 28 people from Sabine Pass Schools with a 3.5 GPA. I earned an applied science degree in kinesiology from Lamar State College, Florida, with a 3.4 GPA. I am now completing my bachelor's degree in exercise science and will soon be a nationally certified occupational therapist assistant. I hold a 3.8 GPA at the Lamar University here in Beaumont, Texas. While working in athletics, substitute teaching, volunteering, doing hair, serving at my church, and I have been a photographer for seven years. While still finding ways to give back, I am the reflection of what a good environment can provide. I am proof that when you invest in children, you change lives. But right now, you are choosing to prioritize things that are important. But what about our children? What about my little brother who started third grade today? What about him? And I pray God's mercy over each and every one of you if you choose not to help the children of this city. As the Bible says in Matthew 6 and 26, "Look at the birds of the air. They do not sow, or reap, or store away in borns, and yet your heavenly Father feeds them." Are you not much more valuable than they? Our children, our children are more valuable. They deserve more, and they deserve it now. As I was driving here today, I was behind a police vehicle. On the back of that vehicle, it says, "In God we trust." I trust in God. He's my Savior, my Lord, my everything. He is the reason I'm here today. But I ask you, please invest in the youth. I am an example of what it looks like to be failed, but to be saved by the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you.
Sean Villery Samuel, 450 Cathedral Square, Beaumont, Texas.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here first as a citizen, as a neighbor to you all. Second, as a member of the bond committee, as well as a member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. And I will highlight why I address that toward the end of my comments. As I was preparing and thinking about what I wanted to share with you, I thought about a quote that came from a movie you may or may not have heard, come from Hamilton. There's a scene, there's a song, and it says simply, "History has his eyes on you." It wasn't talking about the weight of history, but more about the responsibility we all have when it comes to doing and providing the greater good. We have a unique opportunity that, as Mayor said, we haven't had in 43 years. We can choose to move this city forward, or we can choose to stay stagnant based upon what may be good for some, but not for all. As I appreciate, there have been some considerations and changes to some of the proposals that members of the committee put forth to you all. That was a response from what we heard in the community. And there's two that I do want to particularly address. The sports facility, the sports complex, there's been information going one way, going the other, indicating that, you know, this is a great idea, indicating that it's a bad idea. It is a great idea. This wasn't something that we, as the bond committee came up, but the experts that you all hire, that you go to when you have questions, this wonderful city staff you had, that was a project they came up with. Why did they come up with it? We were looking for ways to generate revenue downtown and to get excitement. We have been talking about bringing a hotel downtown, but guess what? If we don't have any buy-in, why should anybody else? Now, I'm beyond saying it's just economic development, because what's more important is community development. And I believe, from what I've heard, that is what we're calling it now, and I'm fine with that. But the thing that I want us to remember and consider is the location. We have an opportunity to place this downtown, where we're already developing and investing in our downtown to bring business, to bring people. Why would we want to move it from that location somewhere we might or may not even have that land? We have the land already. Consider the location as that is one of the most important things. In addition to that, the police station, I think we all said we want a police station. That was, we all would like that. However, at the outset, even the city, during their assessment, during their review of everything, said, "We want it, but not now." The bond committee, after we received more information, we said, "We want it, but not now."
Thank you, Mr. Samuel.
Michael Malanson, 1715 Shirley Circle, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. I'm a South Park kid. I kind of came unprepared, but I will say, growing up around '03, they pulled the South Park block part is from us. They left kids like me with nothing to do but watch the wrong crowds. You know, I ended up on 69 six times. 37 years old now, the back door, I'm summa cum laude, Lamar. I'm a good guy. I looked at the wrong things growing up after they took everything. There was nothing else to see. So putting something in South Park would really help all the kids. It would slow down a lot of the crime. A lot of the crime is from the South Park kids. And if you served more than one term on this council, you would know me already. You know that I've been in the community, and I just need help. I need y'all's help. I think it'd be a shame not to do something in South Park, and that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Dwight Ballany, 4555 Holt Street.
Good evening. Well, good afternoon. My name is Dwight Ballany. I'm born and raised in Beaumont. Prior military, prior, well, I am a business owner. I have 20 years of volunteer recreation and community service here in Beaumont. I was on one of the groups that met with the half consulting team that came down to Beaumont. I really enjoyed those people. You know, we shared a lot of ideas in common. I'm up here, I'm speaking on behalf of the rec center for the South Park area. I live up in the north end, so I'm speaking from the north end, hollering for these guys over here in South Park, south end, okay? We have a lot of volunteers, but there's nowhere for them to donate their services in South Park or the south end. You know, this would be the next step, so therefore we can move forward to probably a city league of events. You know, no matter what it is, we could actually start engaging the kids with one another. And what I did, I just, I had given them a piece of paper, give a testimony. My name is Dwight Ballany once again. I served and worked over at the federal prison. In 2007, I didn't know the importance of recreation, but an event occurred where two guys got deprived of one hour recreation. And I tried to defend a third person, and I ended up getting stabbed 23 times. Now these are grown men that's locked up in prison. You can't deprive them of recreation. So, I mean, it's a no-brainer when it comes to the kids. And I sat there in the hospital just trying to figure out, you know, why. But I understand, you have to reflect. You cannot build a, you can't build a structure, or you can't remodel a home. You can pass every inspection that is for a licensed person to come in and do. But guess what? You will fail if you don't have an address or a mirror in that residence, in that mirror so we can reflect. And right now, in the south end, in South Park, they don't even have mirrors to reflect. So I'm asking you guys to try to move forward. I mean, it's been maybe 16 years in the making. They already have plans. They have some money probably for a down payment, you know, and I just wish that this right here could just kind of like move forward. And I don't know about you guys, but at any family event that's outside, we let the kids eat first. I mean, the golf course, that's for adults. All I can say, the only thing I wanted to hand you guys, I want to hand you guys some graphic pictures of the injuries because you look at me right here and say, oh, well, you know, this and this and that. But true story. Take away one hour rec, and that's what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Delilah Johnson, 2840 Glenwood, Beaumont, Texas.
Good day. I'm Delilah Johnson. We have Urban Roots forming the table in the Parrot Arch community. We do a lot of community service. I mean, I pretty much know everybody here. We all know each other in the community. I feel that the rec would be a great addition to our community. We need more for our children to do. And I know you guys have a lot of decisions you have to make with, how are you going to facilitate this thing? How are you going to get it off the ground and get it running efficiently so that it can put back into the community? But if we don't pour into the children, we're not going to have a future for them because we're in Generation Zen, Z E N, where the kids are into technology now. They're not so much into recreation and all the other things that they can do. But if we bring it back to them, take the cell phones and the computers and the stuff from them, they'll be able to focus on other things like folding towels, cooking, playing basketball. I mean, we can even bring kids here from overseas to play basketball. We have a great opportunity to do a lot of different things with our children, but they're blinded right now because of the cell phones and different things that's going on. And some children go home to no food, no parents, nobody to rear them where they're needing to be. So we need like somewhere to have all the children so that you can get help from all these community activists within the facility that you're going to provide. You're not going to be doing this by yourself. We're going to do this together. And like I said, I do believe you guys are going to make the right decision, and it's needed. You just got to work out the kinks and understand how you're going to do this. But it can be done. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bernie Minard, 1035 Brockman Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, council. In respect to the ladies, I'll take my cap off. I came in support of South Park. I'm a product of South Park High School, had the opportunity to also go to Hebert School for two years until I was staying on the wrong side of railroad track. But anyway, I did not know all the opportunities I had when I went to South Park that I didn't have at Hebert. And in 1972, when I graduated, I thank God that I went to South Park, and I'm proud to be a Greenie. Somewhere down the line, something happened because before the west end was, we were. The furthest the west end went was to 11th Street. I know because me and a few buddies of mine worked at the Pancake House right there. Now, South Park, like I said, something happened, but we used to be the premier, the cream of the crop of Beaumont. And I can understand change is imminent, and nothing's constant but change. Councilman Crenshaw, I applaud you for looking out for the whole of the city on the roads, but right there on Fennett Road, man, there are flat tires happening there also. Councilman Duryo, I appreciate your response when I get in touch with you. But we need help at South Park. I hadn't came here since Becky Ames was mayor. I was campaigning for Brockman Street. We got the road done, curb and gut it, until Fundville, which was supposed to go all the way to Highland Avenue. I've talked to Mr. Boone here, Kyle Hayes, Joe C. Miller. I mean, I took off from work when I was working, and I'm 71 years old now, so that's been a while. But we need some attention in South Park. We don't even have a hiking bike trail, and the west end has two. I mean, if you build something for the adults or something, or the kids, the adults will come. They will come. Just like the movie, build it, and they will come. But put something on all the side of town, and I guarantee you, the whole city will share in it. I was going to sit quietly, but I also want to address the water bill. I heard on the news last night that it was supposed to be an increase, so I was going into discussion. But you're already charging me to even pay my water bill. I know I can pay it by check, but who uses checks anymore? When I go and pay it online, there's a fee to even pay my own water bill. So why raise the water bill? I mean, if you're going to raise the water bill, eliminate the fee to pay it. You know, I mean, I tried to get on there just before I came in here. I can't even access. I mean, the city of Beaumont has a lot to do, and we have a lot of smart individuals appear, a lot smarter than I am. That's why you're there. And we're looking towards you and to you to give us some help in South Park area. Flooding, we have a major university here, Lamar University. When it rains six, seven inches in a few hours, kids can't even get to class. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Gwendolyn Boyd, 170 Myrna Lloyd Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, and I greet you all in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, who's the author and finisher of my life. I'm a minister at Antioch Missionary Baptist Church. I'm a former WNBA player, international basketball. I've come here, and I've been in your city for 38 years. My husband and I came here, we started AAU. But the kids that are here, if you offer them something, they can go somewhere. If you offer them nothing, they're lost. I've watched generations of children grow up here, and I've also watched too many of them grow without the resources, the guidance, and the safe places that we need. Right now, we are choosing to shelter animals before we shelter our children. We have a police department, a fire department, and a dog shelter, but no shelter for the youth who needs somewhere to go when life outside these walls get hard. My husband and I, along with others, poured our hearts into the Boys and Girls Club. They had a place that was safe, but that was taken from us. We had a PAL program that eventually the police department stole our money. I'm not going to go into that. But that's what happened. When a child has no place to go after school, they have no access to a computer, no mentor, no encouragement, they drift. They grow up not knowing who they are, not seeing their own potential. In 2014, our little dribblers team won national championship, nationals, and yet most of our kids never even heard about it. Imagine what that recognition could have sparked in them. Imagine the pride, the belief in themselves, the drive to dream bigger. But instead, we left them empty-handed. We asked them to show up, but show up to what? To a city that has done nothing to invest in them. We have young people who don't know how to apply for college, how to file for taxes, or what trade programs, but yet we have a Lamar University here, and there's no connection. We have middle and high schools, but no real refuge, no place to guide them through the challenges of growing up in this world. Meanwhile, the places like Manage, you'll see lining up kids, lining up the doors, even one half hour of the space, and there's nowhere else to go. Our kids deserve better than this. They deserve opportunity. They deserve spaces that tell them, "You matter. We see you. We believe in you." I'm standing here today because I believe in the future of this city. I'm not from here. I'm from New York City. God sent me down here to do what about the children? It's about the children. We can't keep turning our backs and expect them to find their own way. We are responsible. And I plead to you, I plead to you, when they have a place to go, they go somewhere. When they don't, they have nothing. Please, the children deserve more. My passion, my gift to give back as a professional athlete, I'm not giving back to the city I came from. He sent me here to your city. I've done my job here. Now help us get the rest of the way. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nathan Hawkins, twenty-three seventy-five North Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening, y'all. First of all, thank y'all for allowing me in here. I don't know why, it feels difficult, man. I speak to the youth, but looking in front of y'all like, it's like I'm finna go to jail or something, but, uh, yeah. So, anyway, man, uh, my name, Nathan Hawkins, they call me Nate. Uh, I'm a community activist in South Park. Uh, I've been doing, uh, community service work for the past fifteen years. And what I'm passing you guys is, uh, hopefully I got enough. Uh, I had to blow the dust off of that, because I've been having that for like nine years, you know? Uh, God, they sent me to make a, uh, community, put a community center in my neighborhood. Uh, I wanted to make it, uh, self-sufficient as well. If y'all look at it, uh, downstairs, and y'all have time to look at it, I'm just gonna paraphrase. Uh, downstairs, we have basketball, uh, courts and a, uh, weight room as well, shower and locker rooms. We have an atrium, uh, for events, host parties with two kitchens and also upgraded, uh, police substation. I was thinking about the police as well. I know they don't like to be in that little building right there. Uh, upstairs, I left it open for vending and those drawings right there are accurate. I got it paid for out of my own pocket for a guy from, uh, RDS, Richard, uh, Design Downtown right here, uh, Mr. Zach Casper. You know what I mean? So, it's built to scale. I did go with two hundred by two hundred, but, uh, it was too much and so we decided to go up a floor. So, uh, community center made it self-sufficient. Of course, while we need it, uh, we got three schools right down the street from the other with about a mile and a half radius. You know, it's been ongoing for years and years, I believe. Uh, I think that was on the seventeenth when I came after, I just got the phone with Christian Manuel that we was awarded two million, uh, to assist in, uh, Alice Keith, uh, Park or whatever. I've been toying with him. Thanks to Mr. AJ for introducing me to him and, uh, getting me engaged. You know, he came to one of our events along with, uh, Mr. Roy West, uh, with, uh, Michael Malonsa. He does for his best friend every year. We have block parties and stuff. And, uh, and we always talk about the youth, we're all about the youth. Hey, vote for me and we gonna do this for the youth. And then, you know, you know, once we vote them in, they don't know you no more, you know? So, uh, but nevertheless, uh, they came to the event and, uh, and they've seen, uh, the work I've been doing in the community, uh, and I think that was, uh, on the seventeenth where we had a thirty-year proclamation for the Sterling Pruitt. Uh, I believe that was a beautiful thing, you know? I wish that could be reciprocated in South Park area as well. Uh, and, and, and whatever y'all doing at the bar, like, I salute y'all. You know, hey, I'm fine with that, you know? But the South is still needing stuff, some stuff as well, you know? Old school told me, I believe if you sweep the corners, the middle will take care itself. No, uh, yeah, we need, uh, new businesses and stuff like that. We do need new roles for, to bring in revenue. But people don't stay because we don't have the crime rate that's surrounding around the stuff, especially in downtown. So, just my plea to you guys, you know, just give us a hand with that and I definitely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Naomi Gallegos, thirty-nine fifty Irving Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Hi, my name is Naomi Gallegos. I've lived in Beaumont my whole life. I'm born and raised here. I'm a mother and unfortunately have not seen much change to the South Park area since I was a child. I have seen small improvements and appreciate the new park equipment, but I know more can be done. Having new facilities in downtown or closer to my family, or at least having renovations done in South Park is what I support. I have to travel across town to take my kids where there is more offer versus not much close to home. I don't wanna hear that across college or that major drive isn't that far and is good enough. If that is the case, then why not just have something in this area? Because I have to take my kids across town, then the same drive can be made by others downtown from those areas. For the longest, my co- community has been neglected, and that's the South Park area. Right now is the opportunity to show love to South Park and the North End where my sister lives. I'm here on behalf of my family who live in both the South Park area and the North End. The community is watching and we are hoping council won't disappoint us with the choices made on this bond issue.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Any other public comments? All right, thank you for all the public comments. Uh, and we're gonna be moving into item number one here in just a second. I do want to remind, uh, kinda how the flow's gonna go. Uh, it looks like, you know, we're discussing a lot of different changes here. After we come to consensus, we're gonna take a break, give legal a chance to get the final wording for us because we don't wanna pass something that we don't have all the verbiage correct on. So, uh, before we move into items two and three, we will take a break so that we can accomplish that.
Mayor, if you want, you can finish the meeting and then we can take a break and come back. That way, we don't have to...
Go ahead and continue on two and three and then come back for, yeah, two and three.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. All right. With that, uh, would you take us into item number one, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel to consider proven ordinance calling a special election for November fourth, twenty-twenty-five to be held within the city of Beaumont, Texas, making special provisions for the conduct and the giving of notice of the special election and containing other provisions related thereto. Uh, and this is basically the one, I guess, the calling of the special election, but also the part that puts to disaster propositions and the proposition package. Uh, we had the workshop yesterday, uh, got a lot of things done, but there's some other things that need to be done to continue for the council to make a, uh, final determination of, of some sort with that. We have quite the list of projects there. We have totals for dollars. Council's goal was to stay within the fifteen-dollar range. Uh, currently, we're within the seventeen dollars and eighteen cent range. So, that's approximately forty million dollars above that fifteen-dollar range. So, uh, you know, as it pleases council to either continue to work through that, you know, if you choose to stay where you at, you can, but choose to work through that. Uh, we have Gap Strategies here again to come forward and they can show you, uh, and talk about the, uh, where, where we at and how the current situation is. So, uh, if you're ready Gap Strategies, we're ready to go or you can go where you like, Mayor.
Yes, and I, I'd like, I know being, no, come on up. I know you had explained to the Bond Advisory Committee and I'd just like for you to, I mean, we've talked about it, but in, in terms of the number of propositions and the amount, y'all spent a lot of time focusing on that and, uh, making sure that the council, uh, receives all that same information and making their decision today. From y'all's experience seeing city bonds.
Sure, Mayor. Uh, pleasure to be here again today. Nice to see all of you. My name is Jeff Barton. I'm with Gap Strategies. We're the firm that you all hired after a competitive RFP to help you through the bond process. And we worked as the facilitators with your Bond Advisory Committee. So, Mayor, directly to your point, you know, one of the things that we discussed with the Bond Advisory Committee early on, we had a couple of meetings have just devoted to how bonds work and what we've seen in other communities because we do, as you alluded to, work all across the state of Texas. You can create as many propositions as you would like theoretically. You could break down each item into a separate proposition. However, in a practical sense, we would urge you not to do that. Um, at some point, and it's perhaps an art, not a science, but at some point, you get too many propositions for people to really absorb. And you also have propositions that may, that may be related to one another or that may rely one upon the other, maybe in street projects or sidewalk projects. So, I believe the committee recommended to you, um, potentially four propositions. After your work yesterday, you all are at six, uh, propositions. You should have a handout from us. Does everybody have that? Uh, I hope you've got this handout, which lays out those potential propositions. That would be, uh, three, uh, kind of what I'll call consolidated propositions that include a number of issues in them. Uh, infrastructure at fifty-eight point one million. Public safety and facilities at a hundred and thirty-six point one million. And you can see next to that the approximate effect on the tax rate, three dollars and sixteen cents or then seven thirty-nine. Uh, parks and rec at forty-nine point seven. The Dowlin Road Extension, it would be a standalone proposition, the first of three, tentatively, that you all, um, asked us to see some numbers on. So, that would be fifty-two point four million for the combined Dowlin Road Extensions. Point Parkway North at eight point nine million. And the Alice Keith Park South End Recreation Center at eleven point two million. I believe that also has some grant money that the city has obtained that would be in addition to that. So, you'll see slight differences in those numbers from what we talked about in the workshop or what you all talked about yesterday. Uh, there are two reasons for that. In some of these projects, there is some contingency added. That contingency is just to, because the numbers are still early and we're in a period of volatile, uh, potential inflation and tariffs, that sort of thing. So, that's a little bit of cushion to those numbers. It can also help if you need outside project management. And secondly, we have added inflation, uh, to those numbers. So, that is our, uh, best estimate, working on a short timeframe of what projects might take two, three, four years to complete. And we've added in inflation dollars at three and a half percent, uh, per year to cover those. That puts you at a total after yesterday's workshop and, um, Mayor, important to emphasize to people who may be listening at home and to the audience here that that was a workshop and you all made no final decisions. So, we recognize that you're still working through this process. But tentatively, you are at three hundred and sixteen point four million dollars. Uh, that would be seventeen dollars and eighteen cents approximately on the tax rate. Uh, we worked with your, uh, staff, uh, last night, so appreciate their help. And with Dusty Trailer who's here from RBC Capital and Dirk Mitchell, your bond counsel, uh, fairly late last night and started again this morning to try and get these numbers as close as, as we can. So, recognize that, um, this may not be an exact effect on the tax rate because as you calculate that tax rate, it's gonna depend on, um, what property values are, uh, in this next year. There can be some phasing that we've figured in that will save you a little bit of money. In other words, not all the bonds will be sold at once, so you don't pay interest rate quite at once. So, along with Mr. Trailer, uh, who's really the expert on this, we've, we've given our best shot at that. But I think we've got a good working number for you. That means, as you heard from the city manager, that if you want to, um, meet this, uh, fifteen-dollar number, that you need to cut out about forty million dollars. There is nothing magic about the fifteen-dollar number, of course. Uh, you all have the power to set the rate anywhere you want. For those who are new to the discussion, uh, this is just a, a little insight that the council's been talking about fifteen as a, as a rough target. Or at least that was something that the Citizen Committee used, hoping to be under fifteen dollars because surveys of the community indicated that that's where the community felt most comfortable, is staying under that fifteen dollars. Again, if you think the projects are worth it or, uh, urgent, there's nothing to prohibit you from, um, going over that number. If, if you do wish to get down to fifteen dollars, we can talk about potential savings in each proposition or ways to, um, uh, perhaps squeeze down those individual propositions. That's challenging to get up to forty million. If you wanna look at big-ticket items, um, there are a number, uh, in there without, uh, without prioritizing because that's your job. But obviously, uh, the Dowlin Road Extension at fifty-two million would get you underneath that if you would decide to postpone that for a future bond or look to pay for that out of future revenues. Uh, the police station or the multipurpose rec center are the other two that are large, single projects that, uh, could be identified. Again, um, with that, uh, it is, the one last thing I really want to add, uh, council members, I know that you know this, but we are talking about this target of seventeen dollars. That's where you are now, fifteen dollars a month. It's really important for the community to understand and for us to reiterate now that that, that is talking about the monthly impact on the tax rate for an average price home. So, if your home is worth more, you're going to pay more, uh, proportionally. If your home is worth twice the average, you would pay twice that tax rate. If your home is less than that average, you would pay less than that. The average price home in, uh, Beaumont is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, this is based on that, meaning you would pay fifteen dollars a month or seventeen dollars a month, um, to accomplish all of these projects if that's what you were to go forward with. It's also worth noting because some people don't understand that the businesses also will pay this property tax. So, this is not just on homeowners, it is on both homeowners and business. We're just quoting the typical effect on a homeowner because that's where most Beaumont residents are, to try and be transparent so people can see what those costs would be. Uh, with that, uh, Mayor, uh, my associate, Cara Buffington, is here and I think we can, uh, project this up on the screen if you would like so that as you move projects, we can see where you are in cost in real time. That's one of the ways we worked with the, um, Citizen Committee. I think it'll take her just a moment to get set up. And in the meantime, um, are there any questions about what we've gone over so far?
Well, and let me, normally, council, we do a, a motion and for, you know, get a first and second. We're gonna suspend that today because there's a lot to discuss in terms of what it's gonna be. So, we'll have the discussion first so that we can shape a motion and not have to go through amendments through that process. So, just kind of as a heads up why it's looking different today. So, uh, with that, I think, yes, getting, getting that up there. And clearly, uh, again, applaud our Bond Advisory Committee for the work that they did in, uh, listening, uh, to the community. And certainly, there are so many important projects here in Beaumont that would serve the city. But, uh, I, I think yesterday when we met, we started discussing a lot of things. And I know for me, this, uh, seems too big of a number to be going with our first bond and also too many propositions. Uh, from listening to y'all, I, I think there would be some fatigue there. So, I think, uh, of course, this will be a council decision, so we can talk about it. But I know we do have some categories already set up, so in terms of being able to combine those. And, uh, and I'll just be happy to get the conversation started, uh, and so people can throw stones at me right out of the gate. Uh, I, you know, seeing this number, obviously, the Dowlin Road Extension, uh, and the police station are the two biggest. Uh, I know from my contacts, I've, I've heard more, uh, desire about the police station than I have Dowlin Road. And I think that could be a future bond project, especially if we have some success on this. And that would get us down to, just doing my math, about fourteen thirty-three, which is still higher. But, you know, maybe, uh, sharpening our pencil on some of these other projects as well, we could get there. And I realize that this isn't gonna be the final decision, people. I'm just throwing my, uh, thoughts out there to begin with. And I would certainly like, uh, for council, I know everybody's gonna have a chance to talk and I'm, I'm thinking we might begin by, uh, you know, how does council feel about lowering, getting this number down? I mean, if I, if there's a consensus of the council right now that disagrees with me and is fine with seventeen, eighteen, I, you know, I'll, I'll dispense with us having to carve things out. But if the, you know, if there's a consensus of the council, uh, then I think we can then start looking at that. Yes, sir. Uh, Councilman Turner.
Well, I don't mind speaking first. Uh, if the consensus of the community was to not exceed fifteen dollars, me as a council member, I don't support exceeding fifteen dollars. So, I don't mind stepping out there first behind you saying, if we're gonna claim fiscally conservative, let's be what we, what the community said that they actually want us to operate within. So, I think, and I support staying underneath the fifteen-dollar range. So, I don't mind going on record speaking second after you. But I know it's a we decision, not a individual decision. So, it'd be good to hear weigh-in from everyone. So it'd be good to hear way in from everyone.
Councilman Durio was the first to get his hands up. I'll get to every one of you, I promise you.
I agree with Councilman Turner and yourself, Mayor.
What you might.
As far as the... You know, I'm kind of short. But as far as the Dallin Road Extension, I also have received negative feedback about the Point Parkway North Extension as well. And I hope everyone noticed that the support for the Alice Keith Park South End Recreation Center, and it's just the proper time because I would like to move that under the proposition for public safety and facilities instead of having it stand alone.
All right. I want everybody to say their piece, but thank you. And if you have more to say, go ahead and add to that, too.
That's all for right now.
Okay. Are you ready, Councilman Hillier? Okay.
I'll agree with the three of y'all. And I think that we should get it under. And I think the Dallin Road and the Point Parkway Extension should be one of the things that we pull off. I agree with Chris and I feel and heard the community that the South End needs something. And I believe the Alice Keith Recreation Center would be a great addition. You know, we've got to look out for our kids, and that's the most important because they are our future. And so I will second that. I think it should be moved and placed under the facilities also.
Okay. Councilman Williams.
Yeah, I tend to agree with you guys that it's important that we kind of stick to the number that we've talked about through this process. And I look at all the projects and we're either, you know, upgrading current infrastructure, improving drainage, or providing different outlets. And, you know, the Dallin and Point Parkway Extensions, you know, if I were to choose on what to wait on and trim some fat, I would support starting there. And, you know, after hearing the people from South Park and, you know, there's a real pride in that community and people that are from there, they are proud to claim that territory and, you know, to a way to eliminate some of the excessive amount of props to vote on. I wouldn't have a problem with moving that in with the other projects.
Councilwoman Sherwood.
I agree.
Okay. That's it? All right. Councilman Crenshaw.
I have no issue with delaying the Dallin Road Extension and the Point Parkway. I also believe that whatever we propose today should be under the $15 mark. But I think to include the Alice Keith under facilities and public safety is disingenuous to the titles that we've given, Props A, B, and C. Prop C very specifically is Parks and Recreation. And I believe that Alice Keith should be included under that. I also don't understand how yesterday was the first time we proposed the Alice Keith, and it was $10 million. And I was understanding that that included a $2 million grant. And today, it's up to 11.2 million plus the $2 million grant. So now we're talking about 14 million. And any idea that anyone on this council is not willing to invest in youth is, I believe, disheartening and concerning, considering that the largest project in the history that I can think of of youth that the city has invested in in my lifetime is going to be this multipurpose center, which is $50 million. And we don't know yet where the location is going to be. I think it should be over on College Street, but we're not deciding locations today. That's going to be something decided at a later date. So I would like to see this as being a very positive thing, what we're doing today, that we are making the largest investment in youth in the history of this city, and that that should also include an investment in public safety, which is our police department. That number on the police department went from 50 to 55 yesterday to 61 today. I get that there's a lot of things that we want to add, but I think that we could roll that number back a little bit, about 6 million, and bring it back to around 55 million. I would ask that we do that. I think that that will help save some money there. I do not believe that there is the public support for another $13 million for Riverfront Park. I've not heard one person call... I've heard a lot more people say they want the Dallin Road Extension and the economic development that that might provide. But I've not had one person call and tell me that they think that investing that much money additionally to Riverfront Park is a good idea. So I would ask that that be removed in its entirety. If not, at least a separate item to be voted on. I do not believe Prop A, B, C, D, E, and F, that's what, six props? I thought maybe we should have Riverfront Park be separate. That would be seven. I don't think asking people to vote on seven items is difficult. People are used to voting in municipal elections on a mayor, two at large, and four wards. So, you know, it's not asking them to stand there for any extended period of time and vote on things. It's going to somehow be a difficult process for them and confusing. If anything, seven sounds really good. But if we're removing the Dallin Road Extension and Point Parkway North Extension, then that gets us down to four propositions. And so we ought to make it a minimum Riverfront Park, I think, a separate, if it's even going to be included. I would ask that if we're cutting things, that that be one of the first things that's easy to cut. If those items with the Riverfront Park are later determined to be that important, they could always be included in the bond that we're going to be possibly considering with a downtown convention center hotel. The drawings that we saw yesterday with the amphitheater, and again, I continue to be concerned about our city continuing to spend all this money on amphitheaters. But the amphitheater was originally part of the $190 million we've been hearing about for the convention center hotels. So now we hear it as part of this. So with that said, I agree, $15. I'm okay with delaying the Dallin Road Extension and Point Parkway. I would ask that we either eliminate altogether or make a separate voting item, Riverfront Park. And I would ask that the Alice Keith be included in Park and Recreation. And I would ask that that get a clarification, is this supposed to be a $14 million facility or is it supposed to be a $10 million facility? With that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. And just from some clarity, if y'all have any specific numbers in terms of the bonds, I know y'all have participated in a lot of bond projects in cities. Have you seen a magic number or have you seen where the number of propositions tends to affect the outcome? And again, I know you're not speaking to exactly what will happen here, but, you know, part of your... From being at the bond advisory meeting, the two that I was present at, and I watched parts of others online, what is y'all's experience with that? Because we certainly have hired y'all for your experience and direction. So I do want to make sure that, you know, your thoughts on that as well.
Mayor, again, I don't think there is a magic number, but I think there's a reason that retailers tend to price things at $14.99 instead of $15. That there's just psychology in all of us, that when you can get under a big number, you know, under 300 million instead of over 300 million, that that makes... There's a good bit of evidence that that makes some real difference. And then, again, just to reiterate the point that you all have all made, there was a community survey that indicated residents felt comfortable under $15. When you talk about the number of propositions, it's just a continuum. I think there was a little bit of discussion in the committee about maybe having 10, 15, 20 propositions. And the committee felt pretty strongly, I would say. And our advice there would be strong, that if you try and break out too many items, and I would say, when you get into the double digits, you're probably at too many, that that has a real adverse impact. I don't... I wouldn't try and quantify the difference between three, four, five, or six, except to say, the simpler and the more condensed you can make it, the better. I think that's easier for voters to understand, but there may be very good reasons to, you know, have not two but three or not three but five.
I got a question.
Yes. Councilwoman Sherwood.
For a point of clarification, if we're removing Dallin and Point Parkway, does that reduce the bond by roughly 60 million?
That would get you, by my, by our rough calculations, down to about $13.85.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And just to... I think, Mr. Crenshaw, you... Councilmember Crenshaw, you asked about the number. Just to reiterate, the reason you saw the number go up from yesterday is really because we added an inflation number to that. So there was a 5% additional contingency added, which you all, which you could strike, but we would urge you to make sure on projects you really want to do, that there's enough money in there. Now, you could supplement it with out-of-the-budget or out-of-CEOs. And then we added some inflation.
Can I respond to this? Then why does the athletic complex get a 10% contingency and the other things only get five?
Great, great question. I will say that that's a little bit of an art, not a science, but it is in talking with your department heads. On some projects, we felt like the numbers were tighter than on others. There had been enough work done already on the budget, and they could be built quickly enough that the contingency could be a little bit lower. Councilmember, now, I want to be clear that that's, again, I think, an art, not a science, right? But that was our calculation. We have an urban planner who works for us, who's done a lot of pricing, and we went through with your staff and looked at what contingency numbers they had already built in to different budgets or outside estimators. If they had a really substantial contingency built in and the numbers looked pretty tight, if they'd gone down to a sub-level or had a lot of detail in the budget, then we kept a lower contingency. Or if it looked like a number where, you know, if you just got a certain amount, you could kind of finish there, right? You might have to make some compromises, but you could get it done. We kept that contingency lower. If there were some, a little bit more uncertainty, maybe in the kind of materials they're going to use or the kind of construction, then we added a little bit higher contingency.
Let me add to, councilmember. With the Police Station, I did add any contingency. I didn't do an inflation, but it does include a 10% contingency, that $55 million.
And in the Police Station, for instance, you know, how quickly could it be built? We sat with staff and had some rough estimates, but, you know, those numbers, none of us know for sure yet, right? There's not final architectural plans. We don't have a construction schedule.
I get that. It's just odd that some projects get contingencies and some don't.
Yes, sir. It's a very good question. We went over it a good bit with the committee, and I... There's a little bit of fudge room there, you know? If you want to get down to cutting dollars, be glad that we can go through those each individually, if you like.
Councilwoman Sherwood.
Just in an effort to be forward-thinking, how often should we or do we plan to do bonds? Because I mean, I think that a lot of contention has come from the idea that this has been 43 years, and if we don't do it now, then it will never happen and all of these things. So our strategic plan in reference to holding bonds into the future, getting our citizens and our community acclimated to what the normal timeframe processes should be for these types of issues.
And Jeff can answer here, but typically, it's around five years, every five years, sometimes three to five years. Cities, school districts look at having bond proposals.
I would second that. You know, it depends on the community. Obviously, some communities go 43 years. But more typically, as communities set up a rolling community investment plan or a capital improvements plan, then you would see that, you know, three to seven, three to five years, depending maybe on the growth and the need. We see, we work with some communities who are really on a regular plan of every two years because either they have a lot of growth or feel they're behind. But three to five gives you a chance to show the community that you've made some progress, that you can be trusted, and then come back with another proposal.
Councilman Durio.
If they're doing them every three to five years, then the amount, I imagine, is much smaller than what we're trying to do after 42 years.
Typically, councilmember, that's right. Now, we do, we work in communities that you all in your, you know, project some growth for the region, but your population has been relatively stable. You just have a lot of pent-up need. We do work in some communities with a lot of growth, and sometimes they're doing larger than you are every two to three years.
Really? And I... The only thing I can think to add is this is, when the next one's going to be, has a lot to do with how we're going to handle this one right now. Because the experience that the public has and how they feel heard, I think, is certainly important for us to... And I know that we're all working for that same direction. Yes, Councilman Williams.
So I just want to be kind of clear on this. I'm looking at this sheet and, you know, we want to hit this $15 number. That only ha... I mean, it goes to the ballot. I mean, there's a chance it could go under that, depending on the outcome of the election. I mean, so...
Yes, councilmember. Sorry.
No, I have some... So even if everything that is put on here as discussed, and we say, you know, let the voters decide, it could still go under that.
Yes, sir, you're absolutely correct. Right now, where you are at $17.18 is the maximum that the average-price home would face monthly.
If everything passed.
If everything passed. So if you put all six propositions out and only three passed or only four passed, that tax rate would come down and be less. I think the challenge for you is that as you present it to voters, as the news media presents it to the public, it is likely to be presented as, well, this is a $300 million package with a $17.18 impact. You can help educate folks through your city PIO that, well, that's only if all of them pass. So you're absolutely correct. But it will be presented as a total of 316 million.
And, I mean, what you're saying is a way to think. My, you know, my concern on presenting them all is we're not presenting what was pretty thoroughly said by the survey that was done, that they wanted it below 15. And I'm just afraid people would think we didn't hear what they were saying and, you know, reject more of it. Now, part of that is just my perception. So, you know, that's why we're having that discussion. So how others feel is certainly important on that. Councilman Crenshaw.
And I hear that. And, you know, and I, with all due respect to the survey, it was less than 3% of Beaumont's population that responded. So that's pretty abysmal. And then, if we proceed without the Dallin Road Extension and the Point Parkway Extension, we are gutting 50%... I'm just going to say, I think infrastructure is the number-one most popular thing for voters. That's what they want to see. And we are gutting over 50% of what the bond committee proposed by not putting Dallin Road Extension and Point Parkway on the ballot. So I got the vibe that there isn't now the will to want to do this. And so I don't want to be the only one to continue to push for it if it's just going to be a waste of time. But, you know, if we're talking about the will of the survey and the will of the committee, and I've been hearing unanimous, unanimous, unanimous from the committee being thrown at me like I'm somehow crazy for being against some of the projects in the bond and we needed to give more weight to the committee and their unanimous decision, we are gutting 50% of the most important proposition. So I want everyone to be clear with that because I do believe there will be some pushback from both the community and, I would imagine, the committee by us doing that. That said, if that's the will... That said, if that's the will of the council, I'm fine with proceeding with infrastructure as is, but I'm still asking that we remove the Riverfront Park and, or it's kept as a separate item as well as Alice Keith, and if Alice Keith is not going to be a separate item, it needs to be under what it is, which is Parks and Recreation.
Councilwoman Sherwood?
Um, I'd like to say this. We're gonna go into this mindful of, like, where we're spending this money. So if we come in at thirteen dollars, so then we've got a little wiggle room to make some adjustments, I'm guessing we can kind of go back and forth, or maybe that's what we're doing now, about what projects we need to put where, and maybe some of this needs to be moved or replaced. I'm looking, because, I mean, if we're cutting things and we need to cut, then we need to look at some other areas that we're going to cut things. How low do we want to go? I guess as a council, really, are we going with everything that's under fifteen dollars? Or are we just going to cut projects that we don't think, you know, kind of meet the mark, or what, 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 what are we going to do going forward right here?
Well, Councilwoman Sherwood, you're making a good point, but this is the first time in forty-three years the council's been talking about it. So, again, we get to, we get to do that right here, right now, and I think, you know, if y'all want to go through the different line items, I know we added money to some projects yesterday that, that we could look at to, you know, go further down. You know, there, there's been some talk about the overall, and I think everybody has voiced their opinion. The question is, in terms of getting into the individual line items now. Anybody interested in doing that? Are y'all happy with the numbers that are here? That, and, you know, you've got the worksheet in front of you. Yes, Councilman Turner?
I think if we're going to get into any numbers, we can look at kind of what was the recommendations on yesterday. Almost seventeen million dollars roughly was added, just on council talking on yesterday with, you know, we increased, me personally, I don't want to touch the infrastructure, which is the streets that we increased funding to, as well as, you know, sidewalks, but it's things like parks that we added money to. I remember specifically, we were around twenty-two, five with Terrell Park, and we rounded it up to twenty-five million, and I kind of remember the playground equipment. We were at about one-point-three, and we pushed it up to three million. So if we're going to kind of start looking at trimming, we just can look at what we just kind of start adding on yesterday to see what number we can land on. I, I get it, but we need to see what we can live with. You know, I get it, the good contingencies we put in place, but if we don't need that much contingency money, I'd rather be conservative than just put it in there.
And I do want to remind people, and the likelihood of this happening, I can't speak to, because it's been a long time since we had a bond, but we will be establishing that in future deals, is that would be the maximum that we could spend, what we're passing. We could spend less, so we don't have to spend everything that's said. If we found that there's a design and the build's going to be less than, we don't have to spend that money. And I think, too, that's a way to look at it in terms of moving forward. If the success we have, I think it could lend itself to future successes if they see that we were fiscally responsible. But Councilman Williams and then Councilwoman Sherwood.
Yeah, Councilman Turner mentioned parks, and I, I know we kind of spoke on it yesterday, but, you know, th, this three million is, is spread across, you know, several, and I'm not saying they're not needed, but how far does that really go in, in improving each individual park? And, you know, part of me would rather see, you know, to pick out two, three, four, and, and really, it might be a way to, to lower that number and, and, and really make a couple of them scream, you know, one, for instance, Cottonwood Park, it got brought to my attention yesterday, it's just two blocks away from Babe Zaharias Park, that, that recently got seventy-five-thousand-dollar upgrade in equipment, and so, you know, I'm not picking on anybody that, that chose these. I'm, I'm sure there was thought that went into it, but I don't know how far that money really goes, and, and for me, as a councilman and a citizen who, who may very well use these with my children, I would rather see more focus on few, and, and maybe even lower that amount by focusing on just a handful.
And, and if we could get clarity, oh, because you brought up a good point there. One concern I have on naming the parks is I know that if it did not pass, and I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, because I'm hoping everything passes, but if it did not, I would hate for some of our, our parks that are most used not being able to make any improvement in them in three years. So does that just affect COs, or would it affect our, our general budget, too?
We've been working, your, your, your bond council's been doing good work on that, and we've sat in on several meetings with your staff and the bond council. And Derek, the question was, I, I believe, Mayor, the philosophy behind naming individual parks and what that might do to potential COs.
Yeah, thanks. So Mayor and council, the, again, the, the point in, in being specific on projects that can also be funded with COs, okay? The reason that's a big deal is because in the event that the, the proposition, that, that type of proposition fails, then this council could not approve CO or use CO proceeds for three years for those specific projects. So if you were very general and not specific, then the AG's office would then question, what projects were you planning to fund? Which means anything in connection with a park, or a road, or otherwise, right, would be off the table for three years. So in, in an abundance of caution, we're trying, that's why we, I've advised that you're more specific on projects that can be funded with COs.
Understood. And I, I just want to make sure council understands that, so that, you know, because it doesn't, I, I don't think anybody'd vote against the playground equipment, but we're going to have multiple items in there, and if for some reason, it wouldn't be necessarily going against the will of the people, that if a prop didn't pass, a part of it is, is something that we need to address and can't wait, but we would, we would not be able to. So that doesn't give us, just to be aware of it. So Councilwoman Sherwood.
And if we could, just in the interest of having something side by side, can we have the original props maybe next to this, or some split screen, or side by side, where we could see what we started with and what we at now, so that the numbers that we increased yesterday, is there something that we can look at to look at them side by side? I, I, I do have the papers from yesterday, but I didn't bring them.
I believe that Kira can call up. I don't know that we can, maybe she can arrange this, that we look at them side by side. I know that she can pull up.
Let's see if I can do a side by side. In fact, I can add a column.
Okay.
If you'll give her just a moment, councilmember. I think she can adapt that as a fly here. And if not, we can certainly just go to a separate page that shows that.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, uh, councilmember, just in the, or Mayor, in the meantime, if I might, I heard a couple of you ask about both contingency and Terrell Park, for instance, and I just want to point out, that is one place that we did have fairly good contingency and added in some extra, because there was, there were some issues like the botanical garden that came up. There were some other issues that hadn't been clearly identified. So there, I think there, there might be a little bit of room in there. I was double-checked with Mr. Riget. We met with your staff yesterday afternoon, we're trying to go over numbers and these, these moving pieces, and there did seem to be enough money in the twenty-three-point-nine to address at least some of the issues that you were concerned about. I know drainage is separate, but as we talk about botanical gardens, for instance, Mr. Mr. Riget will kick me in the shins, I hope, if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I believe he felt confident that he could address some of those botanical gardens within that twenty-three-point-nine, just as a point of reference.
Okay. Thank you for that. Yes, council, Councilwoman Sherwood, and Councilman Hilliard.
Also, in that one-point-three with the different parks, I think that it was necessary for those parks because they had aged out. I don't know if we have parks here, but that was necessary park repairs. I mean, even if we went back to where we were, I think that, that playground equipment was necessary, right?
That's correct, necessary. Parks Master Plan says it need to be replaced immediately.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, and that's a good point, though. I think the question came, where do these parks come from? It came from the Parks Master Plan. We had to study the parks and, and assess the needs of the different parks, and that, and that list came from that master plan of needs of the parks.
Councilman Hilliard. If you, if your question was answered, I don't need to put you on the spot.
No, but I, I believe yesterday we had discussed picking three parks, three of our, one in the south, one in the north, and Rogers Park, to focus a lot of our, our monies on those, because they are the most used parks.
I can address that if you'd like, Mayor and councilmember. We did talk about that with your staff yesterday afternoon. We did add Rogers Park to the specific language. It was the one park that was not included. So Rogers Park was added to that language. We kept the other parks in there, because we weren't completely clear. Our understanding was you might want to make those three premier, as you say, right, with special emphasis. But if there was money left over, we wanted that still to be able to flow to those other parks or smaller improvements in those other parks. So for the bond language, we just put all the parks even, if you want to call it that, just listed all of the parks, with the understanding that through your education campaign during the bond and through your own policymaking, you might be moving towards doing something at all those parks, but doing something special for those three.
Any other comments right now while she's working on that? Of the, the question is, the next question that we need to get to is the number of propositions we want to go with, because we have, and, you know, and for clarity here, I know that the Allen Road extension has been on the books for a long time, and I'm, I'm a supporter of that project. It's, it's a large project, and it's, it's really going to be done in two phases, but I do believe that if we have success with this bond, that would be something that we could move to fairly quickly. Because I do think it is also important that we get below that, you know, certainly below that fifteen, and to make it more presentable, because I do think a lot of people are just going to hear the number and not, and drift off when we get into the specifics. Clearly, for us, we're real clear on it, but how we get that to the public is going to be really important. Councilman Crenshaw, and then Councilwoman Sherwood, did you have something, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, then, Mr. Mayor, if you're supportive of the Dowling Road extension, then we should just leave it on this bond, and it should be its own separate item. If, if the public wants it, they have the opportunity now to vote for it. If they don't want it, then we can wait three years and come back in three years and propose it again, maybe a different way and a different price. But I get not grouping it in with infrastructure, because then, you know, the public may want some of the current roads to be improved and fixed, and so it does make sense to separate it. But I'm very concerned that that project has been around for as long as it has, that it had the unanimous support of the bond committee, and that it, it does seem to be popular, and I would ask that it remain on the bond election as a separate item. So in answer to the last question that you had, how many items should we have? I'm proposing that we have seven items, props A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, and that G would be the Riverfront Park, assuming the council continues to want to support nearly thirteen million for Riverfront Park. If there isn't the support of the council to continue with thirteen million for Riverfront Park, then we could just eliminate that, and we'd only be looking at six items. But I think keeping this less, seven or less, is, is very fair.
Thank you, Councilman Crenshaw. Councilwoman Sherwood?
I think that we need to go ahead and leave Riverfront Park on here if we're going to be adding Dowling and Point Parkway. Now, if we wanted to remove something that maybe is a little less important, maybe the Animal Shelter, this fire station, I'm not really certain, but Riverfront Park is staying.
And just to clarify, when you say Riverfront Park is staying, you want it to stay as a separate item, or you want it to remain under Parks and Recre, Parks and Recreation?
I want it to stay under Parks and Recreation.
Other comments? Councilman Durio?
Uh, I don't know if you forget or what, but Proposition F will no longer be there, because we're going to move it into another proposition, one for South Park, so that'll be one less.
Oh, that's going into Parks and Recreation, yeah.
We're going to move it into facilities, because it's a recreational facility, just like the multi-sports facility.
Well, that's just at the, well, may I go?
Councilman Crenshaw, go ahead.
I was, in my discussions with Councilman Turner, I thought it was clear that the multipurpose center was more than recreation, and that's why we wanted to move it out of recreation, and we wanted to include it with facilities and public safety, because this was, yes, an investment in our youth, but it was also the opportunity for classrooms and job training and a co-op between BISD and Lamar, and it was going to be a lot more than sports and recreation. And as a matter of fact, there was some concern that it was being called a sports complex, because you disagreed with that characterization, and so that's why it got its designation under facilities. I do not understand how a recreational facility would be anything other than Parks and Recreation, so that's my comment.
It's going to be more, may I?
Yes, sir.
It's going to be more like the Sterling Pruitt Center. Yes, it's more than just sports and recreation that go on at Sterling Pruitt, Pruitt Center as well. And for the South Park neighborhood, same thing like some of the speakers said, like the lady said, you know, teaching them different things, you know, how to, how to, how to write a check, what she said, how to fold clothes, cooking classes, computer classes, maybe teach them how to do their taxes, along with sports. So it's basically going to be a smaller, multi-use facility at Alice Keith.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Sherwood, did you have other comment, or were you? You'll, you'll have another chance.
Yeah, I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Mayor, meanwhile, Kira has added a column there that shows some original costs. I'm not sure that we're capturing everything you wanted, Councilwoman, it's hard to get it on one page, but if you've got any questions about what the committee's original recommendation was, feel free.
Oh, I know what it was, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Yesterday, we did improve streets an additional seven million dollars. I don't know if y'all want to look at that, but I, that did get bumped up from originally thirteen to twenty, so I just want to bring that up as, as a place of, that number jumped up seven million dollars, you know, and nobody remembered.
Right. Yes, Councilman Turner?
That's what I want this paper for.
Yeah, me, me personally, I kind of spoke to that earlier, because originally, it was proposed at thirteen, and it moved up to seven, but if, if we do land and don't do some of those extensions, I know we're not there yet, we're still in discussion. If we do land and don't do some of those extensions, I want to make sure we do have funding in it to represent some areas in that West End, like the Gladys, and, you know, I see what they kind of find, that additional seven million dollars to kind of take care of some of the other parts of the community that weren't listed earlier. So if, if, me personally, I wouldn't want to touch infrastructure at all, but I do understand, I'm just one out of seven of the will of the council.
Councilman Durio?
I just want to say, I don't, I don't have a problem with the Dollar Road extension being a, a proposition on its own, and let people vote on it if they want it, you know, they can get it.
Could, could, could staff, my bad, Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand. Could, could staff kind of show us the difference of what it would look like with that being on its own, number-wise, what would it look like if that was on its own? I think we do need to look at the options, and to my understanding, it also can be phased out. That's another thing that we haven't talked about much. Staff kind of showed that it could be a phase one and a phase two. It showed options, because we are under the number. I just want to see how close we nudge up against it if it was back there, in phase then and full.
The, the Dowling Road extension costs you approximately two dollars and eighty-five cents. The, the Dallin Road extension costs you approximately $2.85. So if you, if you, if you pull it out, you know, that gets you immediately down to 1433 without addressing anything else, Point Parkway or anything else. If you, if it stays on the ballot, then your other items would be 1433, but you would still talk about the bond package as a $17.18 total package.
So, so even with the eight million and change, we're not talking about Point Park, what we're talking about Dallin right now, right?
If you took out, if you, if you took out Point Park, if it stayed out. So then, let me give you some math. It would be 1385 if you take out both. So you would be down at 1718 minus 48, whatever that, 1670, something like that.
I'm sorry, I'm going to push on you a little bit more. I know.
No, no, please, Councilman. It's about $16.70.
Okay, my follow-up question is, it's two levels to Dallin Road extension. It's the start to a certain point and then it takes it to all I-10. I would like to know what it would be with College to Walden. Not the I-10 portion, but at least the first step. I want the numbers, what we would nudge up against if it was on there. Yeah, I want to know what we would nudge up against. Because I know we got a little wiggle room. So how close are we to that 15 if we just did the first extension?
Can you give us just a moment or can you calculate that?
Yeah.
I'd ask this.
Let's keep going to hands because I want everybody to be respected in this.
There, there's, there's a lot of people that have told me that are really smart on this. One of them sitting in the room right now that i- if Dallin Road is going to work, it's got to go to I-10. It's that, it's that frontage. It's, it becomes a relief route. It gets traffic off of I-10 and gets them moving into the city. So I would ask that.
So it's more like all or?
Yes. So as we keep our eye on that $15 magic number slightly under, you know, 1490, we keep all of the Dallin Road in there, but we continue to find things that we can pull out to keep us at that $15. Just my request because I would hate to, I think it's going to create a lot of confusion if we say, yes, we're doing the Dallin Road extension, but we're only going to do part of it, you know, it just, I think it really needs to, 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 to stay one. But I think we can get to that $15 number by trimming some other things.
Yeah. Well, I, I encourage the healthy discussion because again, we not at the end and it doesn't hurt to keep having dialogue to kind of see where we can land.
Well, and it, City Manager Boone, the part, point, the Point Parkway, there's a, there is something before planning and zoning right now at that corner. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I mean, and we do, we've had a recent application for a, basically a plan development in that area.
And is that at the corner of Point Parkway and Northwest Parkway?
It's essentially at that northwest quadrant of Northwest Parkway and Point Parkway, that northwest quadrant. Yes, sir.
So that's some development that is on the horizon currently.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Councilwoman Sherwood.
And what I was looking at from yesterday as well is that $10 million facilities improvement. If we wanted to pull that, then we'd have $10 million that three years down the road, we could attack that later. That can come out because that's moving people from one place to another place and all of that. But that just came on yesterday because that's not on my paper from the other day.
Yeah, that, that also, that replaces the, the maintenance for the existing police station, where we have to go in and fix the things before we can build a new police station. That was approximately about 3.4 million of that for that. And then part of it was for the facilities assessment, all the city facilities assessment. About half a million dollars or so. And then just some, some work that needs doing on other city facilities.
So if we lowered that to 4 million, though, that would still accomplish our repairs in a facility study?
For the police station, but not the other city facilities.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I'm finding stuff. I don't know. Tell me, I'm looking.
Got out her pencil.
I got my pencil.
Mayor.
Yes.
I, I don't know if it's possible, staff, can I get a, I just like to see on a map exactly where this Dallin Road extension is going to be, like from College all the way to I-10.
We could, we could pull that up, Chris, June on one of the old PowerPoint.
I can send it to Tina. I've got it.
We can pull it up, Councilmember, if you want to give us a second, if we can switch off the spreadsheet. Because it was something that the, we showed to the committee as they were making the decision.
So folks that's watching, and for myself as well, can know exactly what we're talking about when we say the Dallin Road extension.
And Councilmembers, just, just a reminder, when the committee looked at infrastructure, some of the roads that you're talking now that you've added back in, the idea was that those would be paid for of other city funds. So I think the council decided for good reason that those might be more appropriate on the bond, but just want you all to be aware of that. It's not that, it's not that the, the committee said those were not important. They at the time thought those were going to be addressed elsewhere.
Mayor.
Yes.
As Kara's pulling that up, I can just go ahead and say, we all know how Dallin Road ends at College Street. So the idea would be to connect that from College Street all the way down to Washington Street and then all the way down to Walden Street and then all the way down to I-10. So ideally, it would go all the way from I-10, all the way up to Dallin, crossing College, connecting with all the development on Dallin Road.
And where does it connect at I-10?
So the final path has not been finalized, but we do have several years ago, because again, as was mentioned, this has been in discussion for really multiple decades. It's on the comprehensive plan going back from 2002. About eight or nine years ago, we did some studies to look at some potential locations as to where it lands. But it's, short answer, it's not finalized, but the idea would be to connect at some point at I-10. But hopefully, we can get the map up. Yeah, between Brooks and Walden, roughly.
And Councilmember, it's coming, it's coming up, pardon me, Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
It's coming up. The internet's just running a little bit slow, so it's spinning, but that, that map is coming up.
Send it to your email.
Mr. City Manager, I know staff has spent some time too reviewing what we did yesterday. And if we begin, if we want to, we've talked about big projects to consider removing in terms of, yesterday, we were adding money to some line items in terms of what we might be able to pull out and, and see where that leaves us. But, you know, clearly, we want to, the things, when we're passing a bond, we want to be able to execute what we are portraying. So we've got to make sure there's sufficient funds there. So, and Chris.
Okay. I guess it's going to cross Walden Road around or close to the fire station over there on Walden.
Yes. Yeah, and that, I think that right away is already set apart. But yeah, if you, if you look at the Crescent development on Walden, it's just to the east of that.
Well, I want, while we're looking at that, and that can stay up for a minute, I'd like for us just to walk through the propositions that we have. Because I mean, in terms of, and, you know, when, when I look at the first one, the Citywide Sidewalk Initiative, yesterday when it came to us, it was at $5 million. And council decided to up it to 10. So at one time, five seemed adequate. You know, clearly sidewalk money doesn't go near as far as you'd think it would in terms of repairs. They just put the sidewalk in in front of Beaumont United down Fennett, and that was, I believe, a million dollars. That proper, you know, that proposal. So I, I think we all agree that sidewalks are certainly a need. But the Bond Advisory Committee was at 5 million and that was a number that at one time was comfortable. Is, are we wanting to stay at 10 million? And I apologize that we're going to go through this, but I want to hit the ones that we went up on. Because I would be comfortable with going back with their recommendation. Yeah, that, all right, make sure. Any, any comments?
Yeah, well, I, I'd, I'd like to keep those sidewalks mostly because, I mean, in war three, those sidewalks, yes, they're expensive, but they're necessary because these people are going to get run over. And it's dangerous in a lot of those neighborhoods and areas that people are frequently walking. I think we can negotiate somewhere. We maybe have some wiggle room to cut. I don't know. But I think that we need some sidewalk money. I, I don't.
Well, let, let's get just some direction. Because one concern I have based on what was said earlier is on the Citywide Sidewalk Initiative, it says major sidewalk initiative to address sidewalks city, citywide. So if it failed, it's going to preclude us from doing any sidewalk. Because that's any side, that could fall under any sidewalk from what I'm hearing. That, so I, I think we need to be a little cautious on that because we could be taking sidewalks off for three years in terms of any COs. Then we, for street improvements, we added, looking here.
We added seven. It was already at 13.
Added seven up to 20, man.
Mayor.
Yes.
On these street improvements and drainage improvements, we're still going to be doing street improvements and drainage improvements around the city, other than these streets that's going to be paid for with the bond.
Yes.
And we're still going to be doing our citywide ditching program. And that's part of drainage, isn't it?
It is. What, what was?
And when I say still going to be doing it, I mean, if, if for some reason this doesn't get approved, we still will be able to do street improvements.
It's a great question. I mean, I, I think this was for equipment for citywide ditching so that it would allow more flexibility. But we, let's get some clarity on that.
This was also, this was going to shift the funding for our citywide ditching program from COs to GOs. So that was part of that process to move that funding over our annual citywide ditching. We spend about $3.5 million per year. That was going to take it from certificates of obligation and move it to general obligation. So if it were to not succeed, then we would be limited to the work that the city crews would be doing for that period.
So if we remove the three and a half that could be done by COs?
I, I think you're missing what she's saying. Like traditionally, we fund them by COs. What she's saying is that we transferred how we are funding those annual projects to, from certificate of obligations to general obligation, this particular bond. And so what she said is, they will not be able to do the, at the scale that what they currently do it, it would be reduced if it failed because you would no longer be able to fund through COs.
And, but we felt like we had the capacity to do it through COs before?
We did. But that's how we funded it through this fiscal year.
And this also helped us get some of the really expensive equipment that lasts for 20 years, the great old big, big equipment that we can't afford in our budget. This allows us to purchase those big pieces of equipment too.
Understood. Mike.
I think one of the second council meetings, we had to spend, what, $80, $90,000 to fix one of the machines we use?
Just to do a repair on one of them.
So, I mean, we're looking, you know, I go back to the same thing, you know, everybody wants the old car. They keep fixing to keep working. But sometimes it, it's more cost effective to go ahead and buy the new and come up with a 20-year warranty or a 10-year warranty versus continue to fix.
And I have no problem with any of this, to be clear. But I, I just want to point out that our ditching program is important. And if that proposition were to fail, we wouldn't be able to spend CO money on it, which is what we were planning on spending to ensure that it did happen. And I don't want, again, I, I have a lot of confidence that these propositions will pass. But in the event they don't, I think we ought to be looking at items that would be a real detriment to day-to-day life within the city if we weren't able to do it at the pace that we're doing it now.
Molly, on, on the city sidewalk initiative, some of the sidewalk, a lot of streets in my ward have ditches. Now, if we putting sidewalks in there, are we going to have to curb and gutter and put sidewalks on top? Or we're going to just put the sidewalks on the side of ditches?
Well, that's why it's so important that the first step of this initiative is, because it would also fund that sidewalk master plan for the entire city. And so it would prioritize where our destinations, which priority destinations we have in the city that are pedestrian generators, and then identify the paths to get as many pedestrians as possible to those locations. And then from there, identify where can we get the most bang for our buck. And, but that would also, the key piece of that master planning process is the town halls where we get the community input of, directly from the community, which we have been receiving and we're keeping track of that. But that is a more formalized process to go out to the community, identify the support for particular projects, add that back in. So, you know, one of the examples we gave is like Helbig Road, the need for a sidewalk on the east side of Helbig. You know, but that is another one that you have to pipe in the ditch to, and then add the inlets to be able to build that sidewalk. And so just for the stretch that we showed, it was $3.6 million, which will quickly gobble up any construction dollars assigned. Identifying how that fits in a priority as it relates to other schools or other hospitals or social service locations, things like that, recreation centers. All of that gets weighted and then you identify a plan moving forward of where to allocate your funds.
So it, it was seen like it would probably, I guess, when you get started to save money, part of your plan will be where there's already curb and gutters and you can just put a sidewalk on top without having to put pipes in.
It depends on the need for the walkability of the particular location. We really had to prioritize, you really want to prioritize based, based on which facilities are generating the, the number of pedestrians and then work out from there. And some locations, they may have enough shoulder to accommodate a sidewalk. But it was each, each location and each pad has to be evaluated individually.
And all that's included in the, the cost?
All of that through the master planning process. Yes, sir.
It's like our Parks Master Plan. Gives a, gives us a roadmap.
Yes, Councilman Crenshaw?
This question is for Gap Strategies. If we made the decision that we wanted this amount of the total bond to be around $14.90, keeping the Dallin Road extension as a separate item for us to vote on, what does the additional total amount need to be?
And, and do you want Dallin Road figured into that cost or is it a separate?
I do want Dallin Road figured in, but I think if the consensus is Point Parkway would come out.
So, Dusty, did you hear that? So.
Yeah, around 1490, just shy of $15. Do you see where I'm going with that, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm trying to figure out what the total number is that we need on this budget to make this work with the Dallin Point extension, without Point Parkway and with everything else. And maybe there's a chance, could we just do an across-the-board percentage reduction?
Well, Mayor caution you, getting into all these small projects and start to cut them up, that you're going to put them in jeopardy in being able to complete those projects. So I should be very careful in starting, starting to dig that deeply into these small projects because there's not that much margin for error in those projects. And you're going to lose those projects. So just be careful with that.
Understood. Councilman Hilliard?
You know, I, I would, I would like to be optimistic and believe that every one of these are going to pass. But these are what the people want. I don't know why we have to gut anything. We just leave it to the people to decide what they want. And the chances of them passing every one of these are. chances of them passing every one of these are, are pretty slim. I mean, we had, what, 15,000 people show up for our election? So.
This will be a November election, which is important to know. I mean, that gets closer to 70% voter participation within the city of Beaumont as opposed to 20%. So we will, now, how many will go that far down on the ballot?
There's nothing else going on.
No, that's it.
Presidential or?
Yeah.
So it's, so that, that.
Seems to be less than.
I, I, I say that, you know, this is what we, we entrusted a, a committee of the peers and respective members of our community. Why not allow this to stand the way we have it and allow the people to decide? I mean, we may change the propositions around, but people have been, you know, infrastructure has to stay. I mean, that's a big one, but, but I don't understand why we have to nickel and dime it and just let it go, and let's see what happens.
Well, we just did a poll, and everyone wanted to keep it at fifteen dollars. That's why we're trying to get to that number, right? You, you, earlier, you said you wanted fifteen dollars.
It was.
Yeah. And I, and I think that was said, and I think that's one reason we're walking through this process, to see what it, would it be like. And I appreciate those words.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Crenshaw, to make sure that I understand your question, I think what you were asking is if we were to keep the total tax rate for the average homeowner at more or less fourteen dollars and ninety cents, what would we have to reduce everything, the total dollar amount of everything else but Dallin Road to, correct? Okay. What I, what I've calculated is, is that keeping, is, is to get to fourteen ninety, we need to be at about 275 million dollars total.
Right.
And so to do, to then, you know, if we're making sure we keep Dallin in there, then everything else needs to be at or about 222.4 million dollars, I believe. What was that?
Forty-one million.
Two twenty-two point four.
So getting to that would, I mean, we're currently at three sixteen, so getting at two seventy-five would be cutting forty-one million.
Well.
All right, let's go to a hand raising, just so we don't step on each other. Yes, Councilwoman Sherwood.
Yesterday, we started at two ten. So if we went back to what we started with, we'd be at two ten, right?
Yes, but you're gonna lose a lot in infrastructure on sidewalks and streets.
If we cut just what we need to cut, wait a minute, let me get my math together.
Councilman.
Just a quick clarification. So taking that twenty-two point four, thinking that infrastructure's the most popular item on this entire list, that takes out fifty-eight million. That gets us down to one, what?
We can reduce that to fifty, because we raised it to twenty. Remember, I don't know if y'all wanna do that.
No, but those were streets for Wars Three and Four.
Thirteen million. The other seven is not, but okay, whatever. Okay.
I'm just.
Okay, just don't worry about it.
So the, the twenty-two less the fifty-eight to?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just, just for clarity also, we, we have the original cost column.
Right.
But that's, that's kind of a hybrid. That does not represent strictly the committee's proposal. That includes some of the proposals that have happened over the last few days.
Really what was presented yesterday.
And?
And we did hear from the Chair of, of the Bond Advisory, and I know about the, because the police station is a big ticket item, it's sixty million, and that, or almost sixty-one million. And that was not a part of it, because it was a hundred million dollar number, and they just, it wasn't that they were against it, they decided to remove it for that reason.
So I'm just doing the math here. Gap Strategies could help, help me. So with the 222 million left, if you take out infrastructure, which is fifty-eight million, that brings us down to 164 million that we need to fund facilities and public safety, parks and recreation.
And would you say that again, Councilmember? You, you got to 220, you said you got to 222 million?
That was the number that y'all just gave us. That was the, that was the 275 less Dallin Road extension.
Right, less Dallin Road, that's what it's.
So then I'm, I'm gonna go on and remove infrastructure, because I think that that's pretty easy. So that leaves us with 136 on public safety and facilities, let's just say 50 million on parks and recreation. But then I'm assuming we're moving Alice Keith now under parks and recreation, so let's just say that's 60 million. So that's basically 136.1 plus the 60 million. That's at about 196.1. So we need to come up with about 30 million in cuts in order to make the 275 million work.
Well, you got two 50 million dollar projects on your, can I, can I say, can I talk?
Yes. Councilwoman Sherwood?
Um, I think realistically, we probably need to change that number. I know that we decided that we were gonna stick to 15 dollars, but really need to make it 17, or we need to cut Dallin Road, because we gotta, I mean, this is my thoughts. We need to go up to 1750 and put it all in there, or we're gonna wait on Dallin Road, and we're gonna stay inside the 15 dollars, because that's where the hiccup is and the giddy-up, to me.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mayor, can I ask you a question differently? What's the difference between yesterday, the 210, and, and what we can afford today? What's the, what's that difference?
The, the 210 million that the committee originally presented?
Yes.
So what we've added, go ahead, Karen.
So the differences are this.
I just need a total number of the difference between the 210 and what we can afford up to the 15.
Oh, I see. So 2, 210, 275, so about, about 65 million dollars.
Six, seven million, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna, if I can, make a proposal in order to slim 30 million off of this budget to get us to that number. And this is just my proposal. I think we bring 6 million less off of the police headquarters, which is now increased to 61 million. That would bring us back to 55 million. Mr. Williams, don't you think you can get the department built for 55 million total?
Thank you. I think we should also take off the 1 million in cameras, and that should just be funded through our general fund. I would be very scared if this didn't get approved, and then we can't buy cameras for the real-time crime center by putting that on the ballot. It's only a million dollars.
No problem, but that's not cameras anymore, it's more safety-related.
Ah, okay. Well, either way, we'll make that work. So that's 7 million. I would ask that the Alice Keith Park come down some to take into consideration the fact that we're getting the grant. So if that could come down 2 million, which will make up for the grant, that still gives us a 11 million dollar facility, which is still a great facility and significant. And then, so that would bring that 7.
Cut us down that to nine million?
Yes. And then I also propose eliminating the 12.5 million for Riverfront Park. And we consider funding that if and when we do the Convention Center Hotel. We're already gonna have to borrow close to 200 million to make that happen, and some additional things that we think that we need for Riverfront Park could be included in that funding. So that gives, that brings us to 21.9 million that's being cut. So we need to find an additional 8 million somewhere else. I believe that you could likely take from the 10 million that we set aside for facilities upgrades. We could come down on that slightly to 8 million. I think we could still get a lot done for that 8 million. So that leaves an additional 7.5 million. Other items in here that I think.
The animal shelter, you can cut that.
Don't, I don't agree that the animal shelter should be cut, but I do believe that maybe we could slightly modify the, the Dallin Road extension and come off 2 and 1/2 million there. That would get us down to 5 million. I would also propose on the citywide sidewalks, it was originally the 5 million, and then we came up with a 10 million. Why don't we slim that down to 7.5? So that would get us down to 2.5 million. And then finally, on Terrell Park upgrades yesterday, it started at 23.9 million. I'm the one that made the suggestion that we bump it up to 25 million. I think I heard Councilman Turner earlier make comments that he thinks that that number should go back to the original number. So if that goes back to the 23.9, that saves us an additional million. That leaves us about 1.4 million, and I believe that that easily could probably come out of streets that have come up to 20 million. Just bring that down to 18.5. So again, that gets everyone very close to where they want to be with all of their priority projects. The only thing that we're really giving up in this would be the Riverfront Park. And again, I think that once we make a final decision on the Convention Center Hotel, that could be factored into that. Other than that, it gets everyone where they need to be on their spending. It gets us to the 14 dollars and 90 cents, and it gives voters the option on the Dallin Road extension. That's my proposal.
Thank you, Cor, Councilman Crenshaw. Councilman Sherwood, Councilwoman Sherwood?
I think that that's a nice proposal, but originally, we were taking Dallin Road out and keeping the, the projects regular. So now we're cutting up every project to make room for Dallin Road. I mean, I get it, but originally, we were removing it altogether. Now we slicing and dicing everybody's project to put the road back in. I, I don't know, but Council weigh in.
Thank you, Councilman Sherwood. Councilman Williams?
Yeah, I just, I mean, rough math, I mean, there is 30 million in contingency. Is that, do you have a total for contingencies in here, or?
Contingency total?
That sounds about right. At least, there's a significant amount of money in, in contingencies, yes.
So, I mean, is, and is that just if we come across something that, I mean?
Yes, that's exactly it. Councilmember, just our experience with bonds, and I think Molly would tell you, just in construction in general, it's typical for early cost assessments to have a, a contingency line item.
To be safe.
Just to be safe, that's correct.
So there's a chance that, you know, we hit a home run and could come in under, or might not?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, there, I just wanted to make it, I mean, there is 30 million dollars in contingency built in.
The only thing I'll say in addition, on some of your projects, you may want to hire outside project managers, and that's not in the cost, so that would be right now made up out of contingency. Just if you have a lot of projects at once, you may want some outside firms to help manage those. That would also come out of contingency, but otherwise, yes, sir.
Well, I, I certainly am comfortable looking at the numbers that were brought yesterday. I mean, we inflated some of those numbers, which have increased it, and I, I think we could probably, I would feel comfortable making that adjustment. The Bond Advisory Committee was comfortable with those numbers. We wanted to add a little bit, and I'll get, I'll promise you, I'll run down this side next. The Riverfront Park extension, this has been something talked about with the whole, ever since AT&amp;T and having, you know, we, we've got the riverfront itself opened back up, and I believe that's a community venue in the event hotel or convention center. Now, if we had the capacity with COs to add that in there, that would be something we could consider. But I, I do want us to not be, I, I would, I think that project's important for the city in terms of being a more attractive community and more viable for downtown and bringing people downtown. We're, we're adding restaurants, we've got some more, and so having other items for people to do, and that also focus on the river, which is a real attraction for people that's under, been underutilized historically. Councilman Durio?
So I want to agree with Councilwoman Sherwood said a little while ago, that, that 15 might not be a realistic number, but if, does anybody up here think that every one of these proposals are gonna pass? Without a doubt, all of them. Because we're not gonna know what the budget is until after people vote on it. Then we'll know what we're working with. And, and that, that number of 315 million is not a realistic number unless we, unless you think that every last one of these proposals are gonna pass.
From my perspective, I think as a council, we ought to present propositions that we support and that we do like to see passed. And I, I agree with you. I don't know that they all will pass, but I think we ought to be presenting propositions that we would want to pass and fill the need for. And so, you know, in terms of, you know, that total dollar amount, it's, it, if we go to lower that.
But I, I agree with you on that, Mayor. That's why we're saying that part of this whole process is that we, we had the committee, they presented some projects, they bought, they bought that recommendation to us. We add a couple of other projects to it, and now the next part of the process is to let the citizens vote on what they want.
Understood. I mean, we, we've added, you know, right offhand, besides the little ones, the 55 million dollar, 60 million police station, and the 10 million dollar Alice Keith Park, which are both big numbers in addition to what we've added. So, I mean, that is how we got there. And I'm not saying those aren't important. And I also think part of that, you know, the Bond Advisory Committee may well have, can, would have undertaken had they had more complete information on those, because this has been a work in progress throughout the whole thing. So I, I'm not proposing taking those out, but I, I mean, that's certainly a, a big chunk of where we got, where the numbers went up. Councilman Turner?
I think, like, the biggest hangup is, you know, originally, we were adding a number with the Dallin Road extension. Then we came in with the police station that was slightly higher, and I think that's where we are kind of stuck with the biggest hangup. And I think council showed that the consensus that we all support the police station. So I think that's kind of where we're at. But, you know, again, I'm optimistic of having this conversation and dialogue to see what we could put the best package for, you know, for the citizens. That's why I'm kind of doing more listening right now than talking, because I'm trying to hear everybody out.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, Councilman Williams?
I, I just, like yesterday, where we took the, the parks from 1.1 to, to three, I, I'm assuming the 1.1 is kind of based off of something in the parks master plan, there, there was work put into it. I mean, do we even know what the additional money would do? Is there a plan for it? Or is it just, is it beefed up to be beefed up?
Part of it was the rubber flooring.
Okay.
It's the, you know, spending a little bit more on, on, on the parks than we were talking about.
And another part of it, when we told you the price of, they just did Central Park, and that was a, that was a half a million dollars right there, just for one park.
Right.
And Councilman Turner, you know, he, he said, you know, you gotta think about with that 1.4 million for nine parks, what were we gonna be able to get with that?
No, and, and I just, and I, I look at the, you know, what's listed in the new one, it has Terrell Park as a part of it, and then, you know, but then there's 20 something million dollars to upgrading Terrell Park, and so I.
We did take some of the part of, what was it, the pavilion and the, the look, the tower in the middle, they eliminated that for more, helped on the botanical gardens, to move some of the money for that.
Well, but very little of those botanical gardens, the majority of it was for drainage for the golf course. And, and it was another amphitheater. I, I mean, you know, how many amphitheaters are we gonna have in Beaumont?
All right, I, I want to just, yeah, City Mayor.
Yes, and, and hey, I think the, well, the extension of the road is, I, I like it just as much as I like the police station. So I wish we had the money. I think it's one of the bigger game changes in the history of Beaumont, if that road could happen. But I see y'all are struggling with trying to get there with the dollars, and, and I'm not advocating anything, but you might want to consider doing the Point Parkway and not Dallin, and that puts you in the dollars, too. But you still get a good road project that provides real value to Beaumont and opens up that 105 area for now, until we could come, come back and maybe do another one with Dallin.
Do have a project going in, in and out there.
Do Point Parkway for now.
Right, that's right.
Just, just a thought.
Well, I, I think therein, I, I want us to go back with taking Dallin Road, if we took. Well, I think therein, I want us to go back with taking Dallin Road, if we took Dallin Road out again and left everything else, that would, that would lower us by 60 million. Yeah.
If you all would like, if it would be helpful, we can begin changing some of these numbers. Care is prepared a separate sheet so we don't lose these originals. And that way, if you, if you would like us to, just to try things out, we can move them and then you can see on your screens how that affects the numbers.
And I like that. One thing I want to walk back through, because we seem to change a little bit on, and I want to get clarity from councils, so how deep of a dive we want to do. If we're for getting below 15, we're gonna be cutting that, I have that number right here, hang on.
About 40 million, Mayor.
Right.
I thought it was 30.
41 million. No, it's cutting 41 million to get to 1490 was, because it's 270, 275 million from the current 316 million, is what Dusty said. Is that correct, Dusty? 275? So that's a $41 million cut. And whether, you know, and at one point, that was, seemed to be the consensus of council. If the consensus is changing, you know, we, and the votes are there, I'm not, you know, we don't have to start cutting all these and give the voters a choice, but, you know, based on what we had said earlier as a consensus, it sounded like we wanted to be below 15. If there's a change of that, we need, we need to, that's something that I'd like to hear voiced by council. And I, go ahead, Councilman Crenshaw.
I would propose, and if that's what we're gonna do, why don't we just leave Dallin Road, Point Parkway, and Riverfront? Have those each separate items that we can vote on. We'll still come in under the 15 if those projects don't get approved, and the voters can decide that they want to pay more than 15. If they want to pay more than 15, they can vote on those three additional projects. We can include Alice Keith under Parks and Recreation, and then the only three separate items will be Dallin Road, Riverfront, and Point Parkway. That would be my proposal. That gets us, if A, B, and C, which is Infrastructure, Public Facilities, and Parks and Recreation are all approved, that would be under $15. But if the voters decide they want to pay a little extra, then they can vote on D, E, and F, which would be Dallin Road, Point Parkway, and Riverfront. I think that kind of gets everybody where they need to be, and sounds reasonable to me.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Turner?
For me, this is where I actually struggle at, because me personally, as a person who's gets to vote on this, I don't mind going over the 15 in my individual capacity. But when you did the survey, you know, the voters, and I know we say it was only this percentage, but I only know about 15,000 people voted for us to be in office. Someone did the survey, the voters kind of said that $15 range, so that's what I'm kind of stuck at, because me as an individual, I don't mind going there and voting and spending more than 15 bucks a month. And I know my home is a press there, so I'll be hit pretty hard, but that's just me as an individual. I gotta understand, I'm not up here as my individual capacity. You know, I'm up here, you know, representing the people that put me here. So that's why I'm struggling, and I understand, but that's why I'm torn at right now.
Thank you, Councilman Turner. All right, I do want y'all to weigh in on whether, because I, and Councilman Turner, as he pointed out, I've heard what Councilman Crenshaw said.
It's kind of hard to follow, Councilman Turner, but the consensus was 15, you know, and that's, and then he went back to the survey, and they said what they were likely to support. Also though, that Point Parkway is already a project that started, and it already has plans for a development to build out there, and it's less than $10 million. Why, is Dallin Road extension, it's a great idea, but it's a brand-new project, hasn't been started, don't have any, that I know of, plans as far as the development or economic development out there. Point Parkway already does, and they said it would help out with a major 105 traffic. So I think that was a good idea that the manager came up with, and that would help a lot of our problems right there. And we'll be continuing a project that's already started, basically, so we can finish it, instead of starting a brand-new project.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hilliard?
I'll echo what they said. I, you know, I believe that we trusted this committee, and they brought forth these plans, and, you know, like Coach Lewis said yesterday, the reason the Police Department wasn't included because at the time it was $100 million. Now we found that we can actually build it for a lot less, and probably even less than 55. So, you know, I'm all for just, let's, let's give it to the people, you know, let's let them make a choice and see what they want.
So you're saying go over the 15? I'm not clear on...
Yeah, I'm saying, let's, let's give this to them. And I agree, I mean, the Dallin Road, I think I've been, people have been talking about that since I was in high school, and, you know, it's a brand-new project. We already have a Point Parkway that's built, you know, we have a subdivision that may or may not be going in. We don't, we're not for sure. They've submitted plans, but we don't know, and most of it's, I say we finish it. You know, I'm all for the Point Parkway completion, but I think the $50 million for Dallin, maybe we can save for another time.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. So, and is that where you are as well? Councilman Durio?
Yes. Yes.
All right, Councilman Turner? You want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, we under that $15 range, I can live with it.
The 50 million, that would bring us below the...
I think if we did, what we're saying is, if we do Point Parkway, we'll be fine. And I can, I can live with it.
Yeah, that would lower the 275 down to, what, 273, basically? Which is below the 275? So it would, it would, it would cut us, well, that's not, yeah, 264, yeah. And so that would get us, that'd get us probably to about 1480, I guess, huh? 10...
Probably.
Okay, all right. Councilman Williams?
Yeah, I just don't, I mean, there's no way to get to the 15 with Dallin Road. And I know that we added the Police Station yesterday.
Were you, are you wanting to be, I mean, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. Do we want to present a proposal that is capped at the 15, which is what I was asking? And my impression was, that was what they were saying, instead of presenting the proposal at 17. So, because then we, you know, if we're in consensus that Dallin Road just be paused to another bond, we're at, we're below 15 at this point. Then it just becomes what bucket we're gonna put everything in, or, you know, how many buckets we're gonna have. And so that's, that's where I'm wanting clarity in terms of...
Yeah, I mean, I think that's where we, we need to be. I guess what I was getting at, we added the Police Station, and, you know, I, in my opinion, public safety, given those guys the room they need to operate and provide for this city, I would feel better seeing that addition and a pause on Dallin Road.
Okay. Thank you.
I agree.
She agreed. She didn't have her mic on. Councilman Crenshaw?
The city manager said it earlier, the Dallin Road extension project is truly the only project on this entire bond proposal that is economic development. And this council wants to not let voters make a decision on it. I think it's a terrible decision to tell voters, you can't vote on economic development, but here's $12.5 million for Riverfront Park. We opened this park two months ago, well, we were supposed to, we had to delay it due to weather. Since then, I've parked there. Every other week, we come here for council meetings, nobody's down there, and now we want to go and spend $12.5 million to further develop that, when we're not even sure if we're gonna do a downtown Convention Center Hotel. But if we do that, we're gonna borrow 200 million to do that, and we could easily make the park improvements then. I don't know. I just think this is misguided. I think the voters should be able to decide on the Dallin Road extension. If they want it, they'll vote for it. If they don't, it won't pass, and we can move on. And I think it's a terrible decision.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments? So at this point, I would, it appears that pulling Dallin Road off seems to be the consensus of council, unless I get some additional words, and then we need to look at our propositions to see how we're gonna divide those up, leave them as they are, or combine any. And I know we've talked about combining some, so...
So Mayor, just to be clear, we're removing Prop D and leaving Prop E, correct?
Well, that's what I want to walk through, the different propositions.
Well, no, you just said the Dallin Road is, we're removing Dallin Road extension, so that would be Prop D.
Oh, yeah. That's correct.
Don't we need to formally vote?
No, no, you can vote after.
We're gonna, we're gonna have a whole deal put together, and I'm trying to get what that deal is gonna look like, because we have to also now come up with what propositions...
There's only gonna be one vote?
Mayor, if you allow...
We can certainly make more than one vote.
If you allow, what we're trying to do, Councilman, is that in order for us to present the ordinance to you, we have to have the correct language you'll be voting on to approve the exact language that you want to present to the voters and how we want to do that. So that's why I'm trying to make sure that we have it right. So when we bring it back, the mayor said we'll take it back, when we bring it back, you'll have the exact language, so there will be a vote to approve the election item for this one as one vote.
I know, but what's gonna be unfortunate about that is if, there's only gonna be one vote, okay, and we're taking out the Dallin Road extension, it's gonna put me in a position to have to vote against that. So I think it makes more sense that we take these individually. That way, you're not gonna put a councilman in a position now to vote against everything.
So are these traditionally done in one...
So for the purpose of the ordinance, we will still need a overall collective vote. If council is seeing today that they want to, like, I guess, make sub mini-votes, I'll let, they're talking, it's gonna semi-confuse the record and the purpose for what we need internally, but...
Dirk and Mr. Rea, well, I'll let you go.
Sure, so it, it's a bit unorthodox, by my mind, to, I understand the position you're in, to split them up. I mean, we have one ordinance for each of the propositions.
Could I jump in? So, and before you jump, so even if you, even if you vote on each individual item, Prop A, which for Tina, that'd be a lot, we still have to do, we're gonna have to break, come back in and make sure, before y'all vote and adopt this election ordinance, make sure that you're clear on what language you're adopting, make sure we have the exact numbers from our finance advisor, so that's clear, and you still have to vote because our ordinance is so-and-so made a motion, so-and-so seconded the motion, it was approved by this many things, and it also indicates that y'all approved the resolution and proposition language that's going on the ballot. So even, so even if you wanted to do it, as Mr. Mitchell said, in a very unorthodox way, it doesn't change that it has to be done a certain way by law.
Mayor, if, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Well, I, what I'm still not certain of, and I think, I think I understand the direction, and my, my thought was, when we came up here, is that we needed one ordinance addressing all items.
You do. I do. And what he's asked to do is, he want, I'm sorry, what Councilman Crenshaw has asked to do is to vote on the micro-changes that you're making. So for example, he wants the council to vote collectively on, right now, whether or not you're going to remove the Dallin Road extension, and then by extension to vote separately on whether or not to merge or eliminate items from certain propositions. And so he's asking for singular votes before you make the, what I would consider larger vote. Is that correct?
Correct. So there does need to be one large, one, one ordinance vote that addresses the overall, all the different bonds.
Look at me when I say this. By law, in order for you to do this, you have to have one vote collectively calling for this bond election and approving the language and propositions for such. So even if council elected to do micro-votes, that's fine. We're gonna still need that break to come back and put together the full ordinance to make sure it's the one you want.
And Mayor, I was just...
Basically, the micro-vote, we're gonna vote, be voting to, what to put into the ordinance, and then come back and vote on the ordinance.
Correct.
Good.
On the different propositions. And then, all right, what I would also like to do, go ahead.
Oh, no, well, Mayor, I was just gonna second that. We've seen councils, and in fact, being part of an elected body, did that, where there were votes building up to that, to that final vote. So there's a vote of record, but there's nothing to, there's nothing to say you can't just have some informal votes or structure some votes along the way, or, under Robert's rules, you could...
We don't use Robert's.
You could make an amendment, you could move to amend the final order and then have that, and have the vote go however it shows.
Okay, well, with that, we, it's 3:58, we're gonna, we are gonna take a recess because it's been two and a half hours. I know we're gonna be here a little bit longer, but some of us need to stretch our legs for a minute. So let's be back here at 4:10. So let's be back here at 4:10. For my recess, would you like to do a roll call, Tina?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner. Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Hillier.
Here.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Sherwood. And Councilmember Crenshaw. Thank you.
All right, at this point, I, I think we're at a spot where we can go through each proposition and determine what we want, want to be there and the amount. And that way, we'll, we'll be able to get there. And we can take votes on each of the propositions, but we will have to do, I do understand that we will, at the end, have to do a master, one master vote that involves everything. So Proposition A, does everybody have that up? What, the one I'm looking at has the Citywide Sidewalk Initiative for 10 million, street improvements for 20 million, drainage improvements for 25.6 million. I do want to add, people wanting to, if somebody's interested, I want, I want to talk about that in its entirety. So if we're going to be moving items around or people are suggesting it, I think we need to discuss it at this point. And I, I would like to ask if we'd be interested in putting Point Parkway in the infrastructure. Because currently, it sits on its own. And whether we want to include Point Parkway, we have other street improvements in there, so. Councilwoman Sherwood?
I would like, I, I think that would be good to add Point Parkway to infrastructure.
Okay. Councilman Durio?
I don't have a problem with that.
All right. Councilman Turner?
I'm okay with it, as long as it stays under that $15 range.
Councilman Williams?
I, I mean, four people have spoken, but I mean, I, I prefer to see it, the, the removal of Dallin Road doesn't really change my opinion on where it's placed. I, I kind of see it as an expansion of a road, not improvements. I would prefer to see it stand on its own.
On Point Parkway? Councilman Crenshaw?
I believe both Dallin Road extension and Point Parkway should be separate items on the ballot. And since it's being included in infrastructure, I am against including it in infrastructure.
So if we're going to do individual votes on Proposition A, yes, you.
So if you're going to do it that way, Mayor, what you should do is like how we do it for any other council meeting. Have, you know, obviously have, it's posted, so we can do Proposition A, infrastructure. And you could ask if there's a motion and you can allow individuals to make a motion to accept it, to add, to do whatever you want to do. And then we'll make a vote on it. And it'll either pass up or down, the additions as is, or whatever. You can have continued discussion as necessary.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion for Proposition A.
Move to approve.
So what's currently there, adding Point Parkway or any other street or not?
That wasn't the motion. The motion was to approve Prop A. So if she wants to move, a move to amend her motion, we need to be, she makes a motion to approve Proposition A with the amendment of, or Councilman Durio, whoever was, who made the original motion, the motion would be to, I make a motion to approve Proposition A as stated, or I make a motion to approve Proposition A with the amendment of, insert whatever amendment.
So as it's written here, because I did state the Point Parkway when I was talking about. So, but you're referring to what's here on the screen.
But the motion would be, because Proposition A is currently sidewalk initiatives, streets improvement and drainage improvement. That's Proposition A. So any motion to approve Proposition A would be for what's included on the screen. If she, if they wanted to make a movement, a motion to approve Proposition A with inclusions, then that's what we're doing to keep the record clean.
Okay, understood.
I make a motion to approve Proposition A the way that it's written currently. If there wants to be any discussion or.
We not going, we not going to complicate the church today. The motion is.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Let's leave it like this.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on leaving Proposition exactly as it is?
Can the person that made the second make an amendment?
No.
This is time of discussion.
Myself, I don't have a problem with adding that, I don't have a problem with adding Point Parkway to this proposition, Point Parkway extension to Proposition A.
There's discussion, but it's her motion, so she doesn't accept the amendment to the motion. Because we're keeping, we're keeping it simple today.
Right.
We're going to vote on the motion so that it's very clear for the record for the guys that are taking notes and for people trying to calculate, so that it's not confusing. If council wants to vote on the motion for that and it passes, fine. If it fails, then we can go back and do a motion for an amendment. But the motion was to address Proposition A as stated.
Any other discussion on Proposition A?
I, I have prop, I have some discussion on Proposition A because as stated, the project isn't in there. So the original motion, are we saying that, that Point Parkway project will be in there or is it not in there? Maybe I missed it.
Her motion was to approve Proposition A as, as presented. So Proposition A as presented is sidewalk initiative, street improvements and drainage improvements. It does not include Park Parkway.
My, my question is, though, is, is it the will of the council to go ahead and add Point Parkway? Because we can make an amendment to the motion, right?
You can, if you like. It's your motion.
You'd have to accept the amendment or.
Correct.
Yes, Councilman Turner.
So now we're still in discussion stage, we can do this first proposition. And since it's not included, it can be a separate item, correct, for the Point Parkway?
So we're going each individual item. So Point Parkway is technically item, it's technically item, it's technically item E. So Park Parkway is technically item E. So if, if council decided not to add it to Prop A, it's still on there. So you'd individually need to vote on whether or not you want to keep Proposition E as a separate item, combine it with Proposition D or, or whatever, but individual, it's still listed.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, I understand now.
Mm-hmm.
We can vote, we can vote if it is right now, I understand.
And my question was, because we wanted to keep existing streets and roads improvements, does it matter that we're not, that, that, that it's a new road? Or, or we just worried about keeping Prop A as improvements?
So if you changed it, if you add it. So if you changed it, if you add it, if you added in, if you added Proposition E into Proposition A, we would need to rewrote, rewrite our streets improvement item to include something different or add language that says that Park, the Park Parkway is essential, so it, we would need to reword the resolution to include the creation of the expansion, so the current resolution wording would be amended, which is why we're asking you to do it this way, so we can.
Okay, that's why I was just going to keep it clean and we'll do it later. Okay, so I'm going to leave the motion as it is stated, thank you.
Councilman Williams, did you have any comment on that?
No, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping Proposition A how it is.
Okay.
We on the same page.
Council, Councilman Crenshaw, do you have any additional comments?
No.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to, for Proposition A as written, is, that's on the screen in front of you and on the screen behind us. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, now let's move to Proposition B. So can we have a motion on Proposition B, and if there's anything that wants to be amended to that, that would be a tie, or if you want to add something to it, you can do it in the motion.
Well, Mayor, just for clarity, so we don't have to do what we did the last time, if you, if there's some discussion about adding something, let's have that discussion, so when the motion is made, it's clear on what's being asked.
That's fine. So any discussion, any comments on Proposition B as written?
Yes, I would like to add Alice Keith Community Facility to Proposition B.
Okay, we hadn't done a motion yet, so we're just getting people's discussion. Any other feedback on Proposition B? All right, with that, I'd entertain a motion. You can, you can make the motion.
I make the motion that we approve Proposition B with Proposition F, the Alice Keith Community Center Facility, add it to Proposition B.
Can we clean that up and just say you make a motion to include Proposition B in the Alice Keith Community Center under that item?
I make a motion to include Proposition F, which is the Alice Keith Community Facility in Proposition B.
Well, it says recreation center.
That's what I was going to ask Ms. Reed and maybe the council, could, I know that Councilmember, you spoke earlier that it is more than a recreation center, and just for the bond language and our internal keeping, is that we would at the same time change the name from calling it Recreation Center to a Community Center?
Or multi-purpose facility.
Multi-purpose facility, because that matters.
To, in my understanding then, the name would be changed to the Alice Keith Park slash South End Multi-Purpose Center?
Or Multi-Purpose Center at Alice Keith Park?
Something to that effect.
Multi-purpose center at Alice Keith.
We're going to like work the language when we take a break, Derek and I are both taking notes, so we'll, we'll flush that out afterwards. This is too much sausage making for them, as the, as the city manager said.
All right, so we, we have a motion that moves F into B with, with no other changes in amounts, is anybody?
Can we have discussion now that we've?
We hadn't had a second yet on it, were you?
Oh.
Second.
All right, so, so now we know what the, what the motion is, Proposition B with item F included in it, so discussion, Councilman Crenshaw?
Yeah, I, I would, I would like the public to be able to vote on each of these items individually, all items under Prop B. So we've now added, it's become this conglomerate, this monstrosity of all these different projects. I don't know why we need cameras separate, I don't know why we're adding recreational centers to facilities and public safety, other than for the clear intention that we think it has a better chance of passing there than it does in parks and recreation, because it, it just, it makes no sense. As we were presented with this thing and this item today is, it's a recreation center, and we're now changing the name to make it fit better and hope that it, you know, has more public support, and I, I just think that's disingenuous to voters, and I think voters should now have their, the option to vote on each of these items individually.
Okay, thank you, Councilman, any other comments? Councilman Turner?
Just, just one thing I want to, while we're on the record, I just don't want anyone to ever think I'm doing anything disingenuous, yeah, that's, that's a strong word. Most of these facilities are used for multiple things, but disingenuous, that's definitely not the case. If these facilities are only used for recreational purposes, that's one thing, I understand why you're saying it, but if we're going to do these kind of programs, which we have done at the Pruitt Center, I, I am okay with that, but I don't want it to be, while we're on the record, I don't want to not say anything if we're using that type of language that is disingenuous that we're doing this, because that's definitely not the case for me.
We're certainly taking public vote on it, and everybody's understanding where we are in it, so Councilwoman Sherwood?
I, I, I mean, I'm okay with it being a multi-purpose center and being under facilities, and I'm also okay with it being included in parks and rec, depending on the language. However, disingenuous is something we're not going to say either, because I'm, nothing nefarious is happening, we're doing it right now on the dot, so.
Very transparent.
Yeah, we're, we're outside with it, I just want to be clear on that.
And I, I mean, we're not, the way I've understood this, we're going to put each proposition on the ballot for, then vote for each proposition, not each project under the proposition.
That's correct, each of these propositions we're, we're working on getting to will be a separate vote, A would be separate from B, that's correct.
So what I want to explain to council is, the reason why Gap Strategies was asking about how it's going to be named is because we, when we write the proposition language, we have to give a very clear description of what that money and what that proposition represents, and so that's why, whether it's what it's used for and what its purpose is and what we're calling it makes a difference, because it does need to be clear to the voters what they're, what they're voting on. It's, may not broadly say, you know, if it's on there and says Alice Keith Recreation Center, but it's going to be, it needs to be worded so it's clear what's being approved, and if, we strategically divided these propositions into, to different sections, and so if it's going to be under the facilities and public safety, it needs to be clear why it's under there in the description that we present to the voters.
I would just ask, could we find out what we got the grant funding for? What, 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 how did we describe this facility when we got the grant fund? Because I'm concerned that if we're now changing the facility, and we got a grant for $2 million that's going to help fund this, and the description is different than what we're putting now on the ballot, we're going to have a problem.
Do, do we have that information available to us?
It was actually, I guess, in the legislation, it was described in the legislation.
Right.
What I saw, and it didn't state that it had to be used for a facility, just to be used in a park in, in Southeast Texas, and, and either Beaumont or Port Arthur. It was written that broadly, and Representative Manuel was, wanted to use it to end Beaumont in the park here.
Okay, so I was told yesterday that this was specifically for Alice Keith Park.
In the rider, he put Alice Keith Park.
And he didn't say Recreation Center.
The, the language I saw didn't say that, Councilman.
Other con, yes, Councilman Turner?
And if, if it's uncertainty, I would be completely okay if we took a, a break where we can make sure it's accurate prior to moving on. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, just out in the open, and we all know what's going on and where we're at.
Well, I, I think we're going to have another break, you know, in terms of, if that's the direction we're wanting to go, they can know that, and if that's going to be a problem, we could, you know, they could let us know when we come back, but if we want it included right now, we can, we can propose it, and if we find out that language doesn't work with the state legislation that passed, we can be made aware of that, but we currently have a, a motion and a second. Any other, any other conversations, any other discussion?
I, I do.
Councilman Crenshaw?
Again, I was told that the $50 million was going to be a multi-purpose center, and that it was going to be focused on classrooms and job training and a co-op. I read the description that's going to go on the ballot, and it says, "Creation of a state-of-the-art sports facility designed to host a variety of sporting events and tournaments."
So, so this is there, this was the language that was provided, that's not the language that's in our resolution, in, in the ordinance.
How would we know that? Why, why did we get this if it's different?
It literally happened.
I thought we just said we're voting on Prop B that's right there.
It literally happened like yesterday, we were trying to make sure that we, we got the changes done, so the original wording, we just put it in, but the language that's, that you'll see in the ordinance is different.
So I'm being asked to vote on something I haven't seen? I mean, this sounds like something out of Washington DC, where we ask our senators and our reps to vote on a bill that they've never read.
Do we have the language that we can read into the record?
Shall the city of Beaumont, so the city council of Beaumont, Texas be authorized to issue bonds, the city council may be called the city of Beaumont, Texas General Obligation Bonds in the principal amount of 136,121,565,016 maturing, blah, blah, blah. Let me just skip to the part where it says how it's, how it was seen on the ballot. The issuance of general obligation bonds in the principal amount, just says for the acquisition, construction, rehabilitation, equipment of permanent improvements in facilities for certain facilities and public safety to include a new animal care services and adoption center replacement for the fire station and before replacement of city's police headquarters and facility improvements, a new sports facility, six public safety technology, infrastructure improvements to, improvements to be installed within the city and all matters necessary for incidental heretofore and levy of taxes sufficient for the payment thereof and interest thereof.
It's called a sports facility.
So is there any other discussion?
I would just make sure, I, I would like the language to reflect what, what we intended for prior to me voting on it.
We can reword it to call it a multi-purpose center, that's what council desires. Obviously, I made a note that it needed to be reworded based on the name change from multi-purpose sports facility.
Well, we would need to amend our motion because we were.
It's already called a multi-purpose sports facility, if the concern, that, obviously what I'm seeing is like the description, we can make improvements to or reword that. But it's still going to be called a multi-purpose sports facility, because that's what it is.
And well, before we vote on the, the bond propos, propositions, we're just voting on the individual ones right now, we will have the final wording, correct?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
I, I would just add that, you know, I would hope that our goal here is for Prop B to pass, because there are some things here that are extremely important for this community, and if we don't even know what the language is, how do we know that the language that the voters are going to read is going to be convincing to them to vote for it? And I'm just telling you right now that the feedback I've gotten is there is not public support for a $50 million sports complex that's going to generate sports tourism, and that's what's here in front of us, that's what's on the ballot, we are about to approve, and I, I just think these things are horribly important, and, you know, we're just sort of, yeah, let's vote, 136 million.
Well, I think we all agree that they're important, and I, I think the final language will be there if y'all, we do, we do have a motion and a second for this language, if we want to amend it to, to adjust that language, we can, we can take an amendment if it's accepted by the, by the motion, but currently we do have a motion and a second. Yes, Councilman Turner?
Yeah, I just was feel more comfortable with the description was, in fact, what we intend to use the facility for. I have to say, I do agree with Councilman Crenshaw as far as that, you know, I'm more in favor, if I'm going to approve this, I want to make sure the description aligns with what we discussed prior to putting this on here.
Are you offering a amendment? And we'll see if they, if it's accepted, because we have a.
So we're, we're not working on amendments to the language, if Councilman Turner's saying that he wants to make sure that the language reflects what the actual intent of the property is, we heard it and we're working on it.
So Mayor, now that we're in discussion, could, could this possibility be, could this possibly be skipped over and brought back when we have the new description?
Again, if council wants to approve the, you're not voting on the proposition language, you're just voting on what you want in that prop, so if you don't want that sports facility
We'll get the language.
Thing, or you don't want the Alice Keith thing in, then you cannot include it, but we can't draft the language until we know what's in it.
Okay, fair enough, but the language will be adjusted.
Yes, it has to be adjusted.
Just want to make sure.
All right.
But can we be clear on the language, because it is difficult to vote on it without knowing exactly.
Well, y'all asked to do it this way.
Okay.
When we bring, y'all asked to do it this way, so when we bring, when we break to, to determine what you want in each proposition, we're going to draft the language, and then if we, when you adopt that full ordinance, you'll have, we'll have it, you'll bring it, we can go through each proposition and each proposition language to make sure it's worded the way you want it, because that's how we have to do it by law, but this right here is not what's showing on the ballot.
Can I? Okay.
So, this is like the high level overview.
Why would we not put what's up on the ballot up there?
Because we haven't approved the language yet. Like, we had a whole meeting yesterday where we added and changed things, so we had to adjust what the language was from what we posted for the meeting previously, so we changed that, and then we had this meeting where we assumed that we were going to have some additional cleanup, so we, the ordinance that was originally in your packet is still reflective of what we have, and if you want to see what I'm working on.
Let me, let me go to Council, Councilman Hillier first.
Y'all specifically said it's what's up there.
We're going to do.
It is, because y'all didn't make any changes to it.
Count, you don't have anything? Okay. So we have a motion and a second for Proposition B with, with item F included. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Now we're moving on to Proposition C, so. We're going to need, and again, we'll end up with a final motion and final wording before we vote on it, this is just giving them the framework to create that document for us. And we're doing something in two meetings that they did in six meetings, so I know it's a lot to do, but we did have a hard-working bond advisory board.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve Proposition C as written?
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second to approve Proposition C as written, is there any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that we remove the Riverfront Park Extension and make it a separate item for voters to vote on.
That would need to be done in an amendment to the motion, so.
I'll make the amendment then, or move to amend.
You accept that?
Under our current rules, if there's an amendment to the motion made, there's discussion and then a vote, if it fails, for lack of second, actually doesn't need a second under your current rules, but if it fails, then the original motion is still on the table.
Okay, so what you're saying is right now we have a vote on the amendment, yes, before a discussion?
We're in discussion, right?
You're, you're in discussion.
Okay.
But the discussion, we're, now we're switching to a discussion about adding that amendment to the motion, you follow me?
Correct.
Well, I want to say something about the amendment to the motion.
Sure.
I, I don't want it taken out.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I'll second Cory's motion. I'll second Cory's motion. I, I just see this Riverfront Park extension as a, being tightly connected to the Hotel and Convention Center project, which is much different than everything else on there, and so I, I support his motion and second.
Well, we're going to, we're going to have, we didn't need a second as I, as I'm getting reminded. We will vote on it. I'm just given a chance. But I appreciate your input there. Yes. Any other comments? All right. So we're voting currently on the amendment.
So the, the amendment is to approve Proposition C with the removal of the Riverfront Park extension.
And make it a separate item. I'm not saying I want to cut completely. I'm saying I want the Riverfront Park extension to be voted on as a separate proposition.
So we're not voting on whether we remove it. We're just voting on whether it's going to be a part of Proposition C. So, for clarity.
No, you're voting to remove it from Proposition C.
Right, but not remove it entirely.
Yes, sir, and make it its own separate prop.
Right, I just want, I just want clarity for council. So, all right, so the vote is on the amendment that was proposed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
And, and I'm also, no, I, I mean, I believe it's something we've had planned for a long time. So, but that amendment passes. So, so now we, now we're going to vote on Proposition C without that being included.
Nope, because the motion was to approve Proposition C with the removal of Riverfront Park. This is on proposition, so we're good. We're going to D.
All right. D. Proposition D is Dallin Road by itself.
Discussion or motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve Dallin Road extension as Prop D.
Okay. There a second? No second on Proposition D? Within the. There is nothing to vote on.
The motion fails, so is there a second motion?
Yes. Now Proposition E. Point Parkway, again, one item.
Move to approve Proposition E.
Second.
Any discussion?
Didn't we?
Did we put E into A?
Didn't we put E into A?
I thought we didn't.
You did not.
No.
But we left it separate.
Did not. That was not the motion.
We, we voted on it separate.
We will change the, well, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, during the break, we'll renumber the propositions, so it's, it's fine.
Refresh. All right, so we have a motion and we had a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving Proposition E signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, and F we did. Put in A, so we've got through this. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Okay. So at this point, do we want to move on with two and three and then take a break for them to get us the overall motion for item number one?
Don't need a separate motion for Riverfront Park?
No, you, when your vote, you voted for it to be a separate motion, and that was approved, so it'll be its own individual prop.
Oh, okay, so we don't need to vote to make it its own.
No, you, when you vote, your motion was for it to be voted on separately, and that was approved. I got it.
All right, so thank you for that clarity. Yes, that was what I understood, but that might have not been clear enough, and we got it on record now. So with that, we can move on to, so what they're going to do is bring us back item one in total with the appropriate language, and we'll vote on that after a break. But so that we can go ahead and get items two and three done. Would you, could you bring us into item two, please?
Yes, Mayor. Counsel consider an ordinance calling for a special election for November 4 of 2025 related to a proposed 2% hotel occupancy tax to finance a venue project, a new downtown Riverfront Convention Center and related infrastructure pursuant to Chapter 334 of the Local Government Code. The election to be held within the city of Beaumont, Texas, making provisions for the conduct and the giving of notice of the special election and containing other provisions related thereto, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
All right, we can have some discussion before we make a motion, since we've been doing that is. This has been something that we hadn't spent a whole lot of time discussing. There seems to be. If there's no discussion, we can have a motion on this.
I make a motion, we approve?
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second for approval of regular agenda item number two. Is there any discussion on that item?
Can I hear just exactly what the ballot is going to say so far as the description of the project? And does it use the word hotel?
And it doesn't, remember, we can't use the word hotel because the hotel is not going to be funded with the venue tax. But it just said, yeah, it's going to, the venue project, it specifically says, Tina, could you scroll? Is that attached?
I thought the definition of infrastructure for the convention center could include hotel.
The way the venue tax was described and what is approved by the comptroller described it as a convention center, and it said a related, and related infrastructure, but we cannot specifically say hotel because we're not using the money to fund the hotel.
Okay, well, I was told that other cities have specifically done this and under related infrastructure, use the word hotel, and that that is permissible and so that voters know exactly what we're doing. We're not just, the city does not have a plan just to build a convention center. The city's plan has, has been presented to me is to build a convention center hotel. I understand the 2% is not being used to fund the hotel. But this project is a downtown convention center hotel, and I would just ask that the word hotel be included in related infrastructure for the convention.
So when we submitted this to the comptroller, you asked that we add specifically down, the downtown to the Riverfront Convention Center, and we did that. We didn't add the word hotel that wasn't requested, so that's not what was approved by the comptroller.
Right.
So I don't know that we can change it now because we had to specifically get approval from the comptroller to add this to the ballot. And we had to submit that language to the comptroller that way.
I, I get that, but I was told we couldn't add hotel, and I'm now being told hotel can be used under related infrastructure. Is that not accurate?
So you can, you, I mean, it's got to be clearly what the money is used for. So related, I mean, if you had, you could, you could add hotel if you, if it was initially requested.
So we've got a discussion on the hotel not being in there is that we.
For clarity, Mayor, we were told that unless it was going to be used to finance that project, the venue project could only be described as what we were using the funds for. And that's what we presented to the, to the comptroller, and I believe Ms. Lowkey even spoke that because we were not financing the hotel using that money, that we could not submit it that way. And so that's why we did not include it that way, and that was based on the conversation with our consultant, Mr. Jostlev, and also with our bond counsel, and also with the understanding that the monies that we were receiving for the 2% was going to be directed towards financing the convention center and not financing the hotel.
Understood.
So legally, you can't mention hotel or?
So leg, so legally, because we, what we submitted to the comptroller that the venue project would be, I think we even described to, in our description to, to them, we did say that it would be attached to potentially a hotel. So we did use that language, but we did not, we specifically described the venue project as for a convention center, a new construction convention center.
How long does it, if it was, if the language isn't in there that it's connected to a hotel, and that the financing's not for it?
So we, we, when we described the project, we described it as a convention center, and we did say that there was hotel in our description to the comptroller, but we did not say that the financing, when we described the venue project, the venue project is the convention center. The venue project is not the hotel.
Understood. Councilman Turner?
I understand, but if that word hotel could be utilized, and that was kind of the direction we gave, I kind of wish we would, well, I would be, feel way better that we stick to kind of what the instructions were that we gave as a council. I specifically remember, I think it was me and Councilmember Crenshaw were pretty firm on that wording.
And the consultant that the city referenced used said that if the venue tax was not going to be used to finance the hotel, then we could not use that for the comptroller. And so I don't know what other cities have used. I don't know if they, if their venue project included the hotel or not. But when we were speaking to the comptroller, the specific question that they asked is, you have to, in our contact at the comptroller's office, the only prop, that you, when you describe your venue project, it has to be for the dollars that are going to be used to finance that project. And it was our understanding that the, that we were only using the 2% to fund and pay for the convention center and not pay for the hotel. And so because we were not using that money to pay for the hotel, then we could not include that in the description for the venue project.
Councilman Williams and Councilman Crenshaw.
Mayor, are we able to add some sort of referendum to the ballot to get public opinion on a project like this, or is that not?
We, we wish we could. Unfortunately, what the state law says is that has to be spelled out as an option in each city charter. Our charter does not provide for a referendum, like you're saying. And so that's why part of this, of course, is a financing mechanism for the convention center, which is in connection with a proposed hotel. They are interconnected. You really wouldn't want to do one without the other. But as the city attorney pointed out in our conversation with Scott Jostlev, basically because the hotel was not part of the project specifically, it could not be included in the language. That was the feedback we got. So that's what, that was the, the wording that the city council approved and was submitted to the comptroller and was approved so that we can call for this election.
If, if the council had intended to use, or the financing project had intended to finance it that way, that would have been different. But because we were only financing the construction of the convention center with the 2%, we could not include it in the venue property project description.
Well, I, and, but I think our bond counsel just said that we could have.
If we were planning to use the 2% to finance the hotel, you could have. If you, but that, that's not what the venue tax was presented, and that's not the intent of how we're going to use it. When, when we had this discussion with them and said, and they said, how do we describe the project? They specifically said that whatever the money is going to be used to finance, in this case, it's only being used to finance the convention center, which means we can only include the convention center in that description. The related infrastructure that was included in that was all the other, I guess, amenities that they wanted to include. We did say that, that the hotel was connected in our description of the entire project, but the money is not being used to finance the hotel. And because of that, we cannot describe the venue project as a convention center hotel.
I, I, I'm not saying to describe the project as a convention center hotel. What I'm saying is we could have included the language to say after convention center and related infrastructure. It could have said, comma, including a hotel.
Only if you were going to pay for the 2% with the hotel, which we're not. Only if you were planning to use the 2% to pay for or finance the hotel, which.
That's correct. That's, it's got to be related. I mean, he had, the funds, I may have misspoke, the funds have to be used for those purposes.
It cannot be used descriptively to say where the convention center is?
No, so we, in our description of where it would be located, it's, obviously, we didn't want to use downtown because they said like it would limit whatever, but we were calling it the Riverfront Convention Center project. We, you cannot just say that it's a hotel, describe it as a hotel project if that's not what the funds are going to be used for. We chose related infrastructure because when it was presented, there were some other like kiosks and vendor spaces and rental spaces that wanted to be applied as a part of this that are connected to that, that convention center that would be funded by the project. The hotel is not going to be financed with that 2%, and because the hotel is not being financed with that 2%, we could not include it in the description of related infrastructure. Anything and everything connected to the 2% or connected to the venue project has to receive financing or funding from that 2%.
Understood. Now, listen to this part of the question. Does it speak of how much of that venue tax would have to go to defer the debt in the hotel? Just so that it would, some could go to the hotel?
No, you can only use the, the venue tax for the venue project. And the venue project is the convention center. It's not the hotel.
You can't, you can't, it can't be a joint project. It couldn't be called the hotel with the convention center.
If, if it was the desire of council to use the 2% to finance the convention center and the hotel, we would have had to present that to the comptroller. That what we presented as a venue tax was a Riverfront Convention Center as a financing mechanism. It was never presented, it never asked to be presented.
I don't think council understood that, that wording couldn't be included. And that's why I'm saying, I, I think we did want to include hotel in there, not for a financing option, because we understand that there is a financing mechanism. But if we ended up applying a part of that 2% to the hotel, would then it be a hotel-convention center project? And would that make it something that would be?
If, if, if the venue project was going to be extended to include the hotel, we would have had to include that description, which means that not just defer it, not just a portion, it would have had to include the overall project. And so however we tried to split the monies, it would have been hotel-convention center. But because the financing mechanism for the project was specifically for the convention center, then it was inappropriate to include the hotel language because that's not the financing mechanism for the hotel.
Mayor, if I can, and I think I'll defer to Chris on this, but I think the 2% is not enough. You know, it, it's never enough to pay just for the convention center. There's not going to be extra money out of the 2%. It's going to the convention center.
Right.
That's it. So.
I understand.
Yeah, there's no, there's never a plan, financing plan for that to be used in, in connection with the hotel at all. Yeah, that, that's right. In our estimates based on this, this, if approved, could constitute, again, depending on the scope of the renovation or new construction, could constitute either half of that debt service or about a quarter. So to Derek's point, this will only cover a small, a, a portion, but a, a significant portion, but only a portion of the convention center.
Understood. I mean, I do understand that. I, I just think when we were discussing, we were talking about that the hotel would be mentioned as a part of it.
And I think, you know, there was some discussion about, you know, would the voters be confused or be uncertain? And again, are, we're kind of handcuffed by what the law allows us to do. I think where we may be able to try to address that is through educational efforts to say, look, this, as the voters go to consider this venue tax, this is related to this project, which again are intertwined.
Yes, all right, I understand. Councilman Crenshaw?
And I've asked the city attorney to please pull it up, but if this council will recall, when we approved the additional $450,000 for Stonehenge, on my request, that ordinance specifically said that, that was contingent upon voter approval of a downtown convention center hotel. And now we are only asking for voters, because I'm assuming, I mean, let, let's not try to, you know, say we're not. This council is going to use the approval, the voter approval, should it happen, of this venue tax increase to justify funding a convention center hotel without going to the voters and say, when you approved the venue tax increase, you gave us consent to borrow almost $200 million to fund this. And my concern now is that we are not having the language, so voters are out there voting on a convention center, not realizing that later on, this is going to involve nearly $200 million in borrowing against. against the, the, the public's credit to fund this project.
I gotta be, make, make a clarification. That's not true. The, it won't be against the public's credit. It's the, the, the hotel will be a revenue only deal. So that means only for use, the capital stack does not include taxpayer dollars.
We were specifically told COs were going to be used for over $60 million. That's what I was told.
We can clarify. I'll clarify that. I mean, but I know that.
I was told 60.
Dusty's coming up. Let's.
I think we discussed potentially $60 million of COs for the convention center, not for the hotel, just for the convention center.
Yeah. Either way. So that, that's against the, the credit of the, of the public, right?
No, but you said hotel, convention center, hotel.
That's what we're talking about.
No, you're talking about two different things. The, the hotel.
We're not talking about two different projects. That's the whole issue. We're talking about one project.
Well, well, from a vote standpoint, this is a, we're talking about the venue tax, right? The venue tax is going for the convention center. The, the, and you said the voters, I mean, if they vote for this, then 200, 200 million will be, you said their dollars, you know, that is, that's, so I wanted to make sure that's, that's not right. They're, they're not, the city will not be issuing 212, 220 million dollars. That is going to be ad valorem tax.
Who do you think is going to pay if the facility doesn't generate enough revenue? Who's going to pay that bond? Who pays that money back? The public.
Dusty, if you'd address the, the funding of the hotel versus the, so for clarity.
Sure. For clarity, in terms of capital stack, we've talked about the convention center for the venue bonds or the venue project going, or the venue tax paying for the, the convention center only, not for the hotel, right?
So, in the hotel funding.
Do what?
Now, address the hotel funding.
The hotel funding is supposed to be paid for, the hotel funding is supposed to be paid for from the nightly rates of the hotel, their beverage sales, their food sales, other incentives that are supposed to be a part of that, et cetera. Now, we're going to have to discuss the entire capital stack. And the hotel has not been decided on, to my knowledge. I don't think the council has decided to move forward with the hotel. We've got to ferret out that entire capital stack as it relates to the hotel. But our desire would be that the hotel would be 100% self-supporting, not to be supported off of the backs of the taxpayers of the city of Beaumont.
But you were in the room when it was presented to us and it included facility revenue bonds and COs?
Facility revenue bonds solely for the hotel portion, COs for the convention center.
Okay. So we're going to have to borrow money against the credit of the public to fund this project?
So, to, to fund a, to, as, as presented, as that project was presented, the, the convention center, they showed it as being self-supported, right? With, with revenues that would pay for both the hotel debt service. They, they showed it as being paid for with both the hotel debt service and the convention center revenues, right? But we also discussed issuing certificates of obligation to fund the convention center. However, if they're assuming there are enough revenues that, that are coming off of the capital stack, right? You would not have to pay the ad valorem tax to support the convention center, right? You use it to go out and get better rates, use the COs to go out and get better rates. But their presentation indicated that there would be enough revenue to cover the debt service on the convention center.
I agree to a certain extent, but it also involved that revenue paying CO bonds.
It did. It.
And that, that's what I'm getting at. If this project doesn't work out, the taxpayer will be stuck, holding the bag and have to pay the money back. If we don't sell $6 million in profit in food and beverage every year, that's going to be, have to be made up by taxpayer money. No one else is going to pay that money.
And I, and I, and I think that that is something.
That's the point I'm trying to make.
And I think that is something that we have discussed as it relates to stress testing those numbers on the project, right? The, the, the numbers that were presented assumed that the entire project would just be paid for with the revenues of the hotel and that that, all of those revenues would cover the hotel debt service and the convention center debt service, right? But to finance the convention center, we did discuss issuing a certificate of obligation that would be paid back, that would be intended to be paid back from the revenues of the project. But you're correct, Mr. Crenshaw. If the revenues of that project were not sufficient, then you are right. The, the debt service would be, had to, would have to be augmented from other sources, including taxes from the taxpayers.
And you would also agree with me that the number for those certificates of obligation that as presented to us was 60 million. We're not talking about just a couple of million. We're talking about $60 million.
Mr. Crenshaw, yes, I agree with that number. Now, as it relates to the venue, as it relates to the venue, the idea here was that the venue, that the venue tax would pay for about a quarter of the debt service on the convention center.
All right. Councilman Turner?
I think the biggest hangup is we were looking for that referendum language with the hotel and convention center, which is leading to further conversation what we're talking about now. I think if that hotel was in there, as we discussed, I don't even think we would be this depth in the conversation. This is the reason we're going in this depth into the conversation because it's not brought to us the way we asked for it to be brought to us.
Agreed.
Councilman Williams?
So, I mean, we're being asked to vote on a hot tax related to a venue. And if the hotel didn't happen, I'm just, is there a world where the venue happens and the hotel doesn't? Do these two projects, are they married?
Mayor, let me answer that. Let me answer that. So to answer your question, it is possible. So again, what we're doing today is we are asking you, thank you, we are asking you to simply authorize a vote for the venue tax for this project. This project specifically is the convention center, albeit tied to a proposed new hotel. But to answer your question, could you, first of all, you don't have to, even if the voters approve this, you don't have to move forward. Okay? Because I know we still have a lot of conversations and a lot of number crunching to get us to whether or not we want to move forward with the convention center or the hotel.
But the venue tax would go into effect and it would be collected for a few, if it didn't occur then, a future.
Correct.
And it could be used for what?
Well, it could really be used for this venue project, which is a convention center. But to answer your question, could, could you move forward with the convention center without the hotel? You could. But again, the idea behind the convention center is, of course, we, we would love to have a new venue that overlooks the river. But the idea would be, it would feed into the hotel and, and basically attract a lot, a lot, a lot of visitors to Beaumont.
No, and, and I agree. I'd like to see the language, but, you know, even if the language was in there, I, you know, we're asking if, if citizens are okay with taxing visitors an extra 2%. I don't think that a yes to that is necessarily a yes to a hotel. You know, I, I think they can live in separate worlds. And so I wish it said hotel, but, and I'll pound the table with you. But I, I just, even if it did and, and people voted yes, they're saying, yes, we want to take that 2% and.
Concerned that that is, concerned that that is the, the plan. And now voters are not going to have an opportunity to get us to borrow, to borrow $200 million for a convention center hotel.
Okay. Assistant City Manager Boone and then Councilman Williams.
Just real quickly, and I understand the resolution to approve the contract extension, basically expansion with Stone, Stonehenge was.
There is, and I'm Councilman Turner, the, there is, and I'm Councilman Turner, you'll be next. I just know there was discussion about getting voter approval in some format for the hotel. And so being able to get there, whether it's another vehicle or not, you know, it'd be nice to know if the, the 2% tax, you know, it'd be nice to know if, you know, it'd be nice to know if the, the 2% tax, I think, is a reasonable thing to be doing because it can help fund a civic, you know, a convention center. If it doesn't occur immediately down the road, we would still be collecting it and the money would just be earmarked for it. Is that correct? Or does it have to be built in a certain time?
We have to.
One year. Yeah, there's a time, there's a time limit.
Okay.
In terms of when you can start collecting it. And I will say that, again, council will obviously decide, but even if this, y'all do not move forward with this call, even if the vote fails, you know, potentially you could still move forward with the project. You're just out a million of this revenue for the project.
I, I know AJ's next, Councilman Turner's next, but I just, I want us to take a step back from what we're saying here, okay? Because just last time for council, we were right back up here. And I think I repeated myself six times as to why the hotel could not be mentioned as a venue tax project. And I completely understand Councilmember Crenshaw's concerns. They were two different things that we were trying to address into this venue project proposition. And I hear you, but we have been discussing a hotel and convention center on the 555 site for over 50 years in this city, right? And just recently, as we've looked at the renderings that you're getting a little ahead of, because these numbers are not accurate yet. We have not fine tuned these numbers, which is why the public has not heard or has not learned more, not just about the venue taxes, but about HV 5212 and the rebates that we're going to be able, eligible for to get back. So because of the venue tax financing, which as of today is anywhere from approximately 1 to 1.2 million dollars a year that will go to pay off the debt, you're exactly right, Councilmember Crenshaw, the public debt that's going to be pooled for the convention center, that is 1 to 1.2 million dollars from the start of this venue tax getting approved. And that is visitor spending. So in the same way that we are asking our residents for increases in the geo bond, we are also asking our visitors with an increase of 2% that it's going to in turn draw in more visitors, more conventions, because our civic center does not have breakout rooms.
Thank you. I mean, I don't think there's any lack of clarity on the venue tax. I think it, it involves getting, you know, clear direction about regarding the hotel vote. So I, I don't think we, I don't, I don't believe anybody has any under, you know, misunderstanding about the venue tax and where the money was going to be focused towards, but that it would be.
That a hotel is not considered a part of the venue project? And that is why in the ballot language, we added the word downtown, as Councilmember Crenshaw suggested. But we were unable to add the word hotel because it is not part of the venue project. And that 2% funding is not going to be paid off of the debt of the hotel.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Turner?
My, my, my thoughts are, when we originally kind of started discussing this, I think it would have been a lot more helpful if we would have knew that it was against state law, what we were kind of hand struck, handstrung to do prior to, you know, Councilmember Crenshaw making a recommendation that we can utilize this to kind of get some type of feel for the voters. I'm kind of finding this out today versus, maybe I just don't remember.
So when we talked about this and not multiple times, we said that the 2% would have to be, whatever the 2%, whatever the venue project is, however the financing would have to be used. When we were delineating between financing mechanisms, it was never discussed to use the 2% for the hotel, which is why, which is why it could not be included in the venue project. So it wasn't that council was deceived, it's that council said we were going to finance this project this way, we're going to finance this project that way. And because that was the direction that was given by council, it didn't take into account this, the separate resolution. There was, we were having a financing conversation about how we were going to finance these multiple projects. And during that conversation, it was brought up that we could do a venue tax for the convention center. And staff along with bond council and other members went down that path to get that done. And so the, the, the wording in this, in this resolution for hotel convention center project approval by voters was not something we can do unless you wanted to include that in your venue tax as a financing option. And that was not something that we said, like our bond council said, there was not enough money to split between the two projects to make this convention center viable as a viable build for council. And so that's why the 2% is for the convention center only. And that's why you can't use the hotel in that language because it's not a part of the financing mechanism for that 2%.
And my second up, just to kind of land on some form of a solution, because I see where we're getting hung up at. The last time we did a charter revision, when was that? When it, when it actually didn't pass? When would be eligible to do again?
So the last charter was, was done in November of 2023. And so you have to do two years from the election date. So the next one will be, it will be after that May date of this year. So technically you'll be eligible for, to do an election in November of 2026.
What about May of 26?
Could, depending on when the day fails. So if the.
That'd be, that's beyond the two years. It's two and a half years.
It may or may not be because I think, oh no, it's 2026, you're right. So it'd be May 2025. So you could do it in May, right?
So my reason for asking that is because I heard Chris, Assistant City Manager Chris say earlier, it would have to be a charter change to actually do a referendum. I think that still gives us more than enough time to address what we're talking about today. If we do look at changing some of the language in that charter so we can kind of get what we're looking for from voters or what we're talking about. I'm just trying to land on some form of a solution because we're kind of hung up right now and I understand, I agree. So I think if we did look at doing that, because you've discussed term limits and everything already, if we can kind of look at some different form of language in our charter so we can get referendums from our voters to get their input, I think that would be very feasible and I think that would help us kind of get over the hump that we're at right now.
I think that's a good suggestion as well. Council, Councilwoman Sherwood?
I think for clarity purposes, I'm trying to understand if we're, we want to vote of participation in order to move forward with the hotel and convention center. So I get it. We were trying to use this as a vehicle to get their input on said project. Is there not an option for us to get this language put into our November bond election as just some, some amendment or option to have voter participation? Can we not add this on there while they're already going vote on something?
That's what I wanted. I wanted it to say after related infrastructure, including a hotel, even if we have to put in parentheses funded separately. That way people knew when they were voting on the venue project, I'm voting on the venue tax increase, that they would be voting to what this project was about.
No, I mean, like something.
So the answer is no, because we had to submit this to the comptroller in order to get an impact statement letter to be approved in order for us to even call the election. And the comptroller instructed us to only include the items that will be funded by the venue tax.
Okay, I, I'm.
So the answer is no, we cannot, we don't have enough time to bring it back to the, to the comptroller to get approval to add it to the ballot. If you don't, if you don't call for the election, like soon, you won't be able to.
Turner had suggested the, the, appears the only way we're going to be able to get to a referendum on the hotel would be to have a city charter change that would allow a referendum. Is, is that a fair understanding?
Yeah, I'm not done. I'm, I'm, I'm going somewhere with this.
All right.
We, we got citizen approval for the bond by saying, come here and, and input your idea on the bond. If what you're saying is we just want citizen input, we want them to have a vote on the idea of a hotel convention center, could not we do that somewhere separately? Whether it's a part of this election or whether it's something that we put on the city website for a whole two months or three months before we get ready to do this and said, hey, we need your approval. What do you think about a hotel convention center? What I'm saying is we're getting hung up on this language that we want to tie it to the 2% tax, when really all you want is voter participation on a hotel and convention center, their sentiments, that they have an input and approval. Am I missing it? Because I thought that's what you really wanted, just kind of like what we did with the bond, but we didn't have an election to do it. We had 3,000 participants that participated with their comments about where they stood. If all you want is citizen participation, we don't have to tie it. If all you want is citizen participation, we don't have to tie it to this, is what I'm asking.
You're saying about like a survey?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think that.
You want to vote.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. I thought you just wanted participation.
You don't have a clue who's really doing that.
But I'm saying if the city put it on, you want participation, that's what you're saying. You don't want no nefarious, behind tricky stuff. You go create a, a website or place or wherever, or the city or whoever and do a podcast. I want your opinion about X, Y. We don't have to necessarily tie it to this, right? I mean, I'm just saying for participation purpose.
Understood, but with the ordinance that we passed, we did indicate that we would be going to the voters with that, correct?
You passed a resolution specifically saying that the, there would be, before the council approved the hotel, the line specifically says, whereas council, city council acknowledges that the hotel convention project will not move forward without voter approval.
Yeah, I, I.
Just a thought, theoretically, if you had the charter changed in the spring, you may could have a referendum prior to executing the final documents to move forward with the project, but that does put you in the spring.
Right, but we could, but if, just for our timeline, and I know this is getting complicated, but if we do a charter change for May to allow for a referendum, we, we would be waiting until the following November to vote?
You can call a special election, but you just call some more.
In May, right?
That, you know.
You can call a special election whenever you like.
There wouldn't be a point in calling a special election unless the charter, uh, unless it was approved. So there wouldn't be any prior action taken, but we could look at, uh, budgeting for such.
Could we do the?
Have a referendum on in November of 26 then, if the charter, I mean.
We definitely could do that.
Do the charter change election in the March primary? And then in May, have a special election on the?
Well, people, I don't think since it's not an open primary, you can either vote in the Republican or Democratic primary. I don't know that it could, if it could be in both.
It could be in both. The referendum would be on both Republican and Democrat ballots.
Just keep in mind when we have city elections, there's, there is no party affiliation in, in that. They would just get their ballot for the city of Beaumont and vote on.
Oh, yeah, no, I get that. I'm just saying that.
But if we were to call a special election, say in May.
He was asking about March.
March, no. You can only call elections in, in November and in May. That's it. And if you called a special election for, say, May of 2026, just keep in mind how much money you're looking at spending, at least a hundred plus thousand dollars for a special election because you don't have any other entities to split that cost with. So you'd be looking at 111, 112,000 dollars for a special election in May.
Could we do both at the same time? Could we do a charter change and the referendum? If the charter change didn't pass, then it would just void the referendum?
So it doesn't allow for an if then vote? Because you could have someone voting for, against the referendum or voting for the hotel and the hotel passed, but the referendum didn't? And then you have a complex.
Just trying to think of us.
You have to do the court, the cart and then the horse or whatever. The hearts, you know what I mean?
Cart before the horse.
That's it.
Well, from what I'm hearing though, with what we did with the ordinance, you know, with the resolution, we did indicate we would be going to a vote, so.
In order to expand the contract with Stonehenge.
With, there, there's not sufficient time to add a, a vote for a charter change for November for just that one item.
No, because of the timeframe, two years.
Uh, yeah, that's it.
The charter was approved.
November 7th.
November 7th and this election will be November 4th.
That's not two years.
For whatever it's worth, I'm in favor of this just with the understanding that I would be against any future votes to borrow money for a convention center hotel that doesn't have voter approval. But I'm, I'm not saying I'm going to be against this.
With that, we can move forward with item number two and, uh, address this other issue at a different time because they are separate issues. Yes. Please.
Just want to share to council, we would do above and board, above board and communicating how this is to come about. You know, that this, this venue tax will be tied to convention center hotel project.
We can do that in the education.
And while there's not approval of it, 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 it gives council authorization or, or not authorization, but feedback, uh, on how to proceed with the project. So we would make sure this is a part of our comprehensive educational program going into it for here. But this is substantial amount of money for the city to get started with.
Right.
And to go toward a project if you choose to. If you choose not to, the money just goes away, but you're talking a million plus dollars a year that could go toward a project. But, uh, we will, we will go above board with transparency and making sure the public realizes, uh, knows what the council's intent was.
Maybe just to move things forward, we can schedule a, uh, workshop just on that, on how we might be able to do that in the next four weeks so that we could be moving a, ahead in, in terms of alternatives for the referendum. But go ahead and proceed on this for the November election. Is that agreeable? Is that something that satisfies? Is there, would there be a reason in not doing a workshop? All right, so.
Oh no, my silence wasn't complicit. It was me waiting for the manager to probably pipe in and say something.
Loves workshops, but go ahead.
Yeah, so to be clear, um, I'm all for, that's nice. I'm all for voter education and, and voter acknowledgement, but you have to really be clear about like what we're educating the public on and how, and, and what the purpose is, um, with that understanding. So if we're going to do a workshop on a referendum and what that looks like, and, and how we want to put charter amendments on, uh, on the ballot for this upcoming, um, or the, our future election, we could do that. But I would recommend that we not use that platform to educate people or to advocate for against an item on the ballot.
You're talking about the workshop?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I wasn't thinking that. That didn't, that didn't the direction I was going. I was just for clarity, because we're spending a lot of time when we clearly, nobody appears to have a problem with the venue tax itself. It's just the lack of clarity for future direction. So this is just on the venue tax. We will schedule a workshop, uh, about a referendum on something that could be, uh, how we might be able to get from point A to point B. So is, is there any other discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second, correct? No other discussion. All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This last item is, uh, pretty simple, so, Mr. City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Counsel to consider authorizing the city manager to execute a joint election agreement and election services contract for November, November 4th, 2025, between Jefferson County and the city of Beaumont for a special election being held jointly with the city of Bevel Oaks, city of Groves, city of Port Neches, Jefferson County Drainage District 7, Jefferson County Emergency Services District Number 1 and 5, Jefferson County Water Control Improvement District Number 10, Port Nature, Groves ISD, and Port of Port Arthur. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number three? That would be. Councilman Durio. Any discussion? All in favor of, uh, approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And so now we're going to have a recess to get this language. How much time are y'all going to need?
About 45 minutes.
So we'll say meet back at, uh, 6:20?
Sure.
We'll go ahead and have a roll call just for those purposes and then we'll proceed.
Mayor Perotim, I'm sorry, Mayor West.
President?
Mayor Perotim Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Hillier.
Here.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Sherwood. And Councilmember Crenshaw.
Here.
Thank you.
And Mayor, before we have the reading or motion on the item, I did want to go through the proposition language for each prop. Look on your screen or whichever one you want to go. There was no changes to the proposition language for Prop A. Those are just the final numbers. It's going to be a, just keep going. No, Prop B. Scroll down. If you recall, in Prop B, we did add the language for the community centers. So you can see that the language now reads a new multipurpose sports and community facility for five and for seven and new multipurpose center at Alice Keith Park. So I believe that Riverfront was supposed to come out of this one, dear. For the Parks and Recreation one, that's, we missed that one. So that'll be, we'll revise that one to eliminate where it says Riverfront Park. Wrong draft, but keep going. Prop C, he'll email it. You wanted, you wanted it to be separate. So you have to tell me how you want it, but how you, well, go back up because we can leave it, but if you scroll back down, I'm sorry, no, Tina, scroll down. The numbers and scroll down, further down.
It doesn't include the number.
Those, those, those numbers would change. So if you wanted some rollover, but if you go to the next prop, which is why we took it out, but if you go to the next proposition, just keep going down. Just page down to Prop E. Next, right there. That's where we talk about the Riverfront Park, separate. So those dollars amount wouldn't, aren't reflected in Proposition C, which is why we need to take it out, that language out. I'm going to go to gap strategies on that one.
My understanding as well, Councilmember.
So, so we, so we're going to, we can leave it, but does that impact the numbers, dear? Okay, then we can leave it. So you found, so if you want to go back and look at Proposition C again, it does include Riverfront Park, and this one includes a Riverfront Park expansion. Do you need to see it again?
No.
Okay, so.
And that's what's on that sheet, too.
Yeah, okay, scroll down. Keep going. And then Prop E was the Parkway extension on its own. And so in the ordinance, I'm just showing you how it would actually appear on the ballot, but in the ordinance, all of the language is the same. It appears approximately three, three times in the ordinance, but it all reflects the same language. That's the last one, yes ma'am. And if council has any questions, should be reflective of the document, we kept it. We kept it in the order that's on the... That's on the sheet that was handed out by Gap Strategies. So if you wanted to...
Do you have this in printed form anywhere?
It would take... I was being... Where I said it would take, it's a fairly long document. I have one printed copy for your signature, which is why we came back down, but it did take... If you want to give me another 10 minutes, I can probably go print it out.
How many pages is it? It looks like 37?
It's... Yes. And because it's the full ballot language that I presented, it's shown in three ways. So it's the ordinance language that y'all will approve, the ballot language of how it will be presented to the voters, and some other, like, state statutory language. If there's some questions, we can go through each one if you'd like. If you want to change the order of the ballot, we can do that as well, but just know that it takes some time because we have to... All of those numbers that you see have to be plugged out and put in the proper place. It takes me about...
Yeah, I don't have to have it printed out.
What are you trying to see? Scroll... So which one?
From the beginning to the end.
Okay, let's go to Prop A. Right there. Scroll down.
Can you lose the header? To get us more screens?
Can you make it just... The page a little bit smaller so I guess they can see it on one document? That's it. Just scroll down so you can see the full prop language.
There you go.
Thank you. Can we move to Prop B?
Yes. Anybody have any questions on Prop A? I would say no questions.
This is Proposition B. Any questions on Prop B?
No, ma'am. Everybody get through B?
Okay, Prop C. I don't speculate on people's intelligence. I'm always disappointed. Can you turn your mic on, Councilman?
Hey, everybody.
It's a public meeting.
Yeah.
We can move on if nobody said anything, so I'm good.
Yeah.
I mean, what have... I mean, I'm just out of... Would it get weird if one were to pass and the other fell? Like, just...
That's what I'm saying.
Like how you can't issue debt.
One's an extension.
So it's just... Two different.
Yeah, they are two distinct.
The difference between... If I understand your question correctly, if this one failed and the other one passed, we would be able to do an expansion project in Riverfront Park, but not improvement in Riverfront Park or the other prop listed. If this one passed and the other one failed, we'd be able to do improvements in this park, in Riverfront Park, but not an expansion project, and we couldn't issue a CO to do an expansion project in the park either.
Okay, so it doesn't hamstring?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Any additional questions?
For three years.
For three years. If this... If the next... If the next one fell, right? Next one? Now, this one is the one that's directly related to the expansion. So if this one failed, then the city could not issue COs to do an expansion project. But if Proposition C passed, you could still do improvements in the park, just not an expansion project.
Any questions?
And then again, this is the Parkway. There was no change to the original language. It's just exactly how it's pulled out. That's it.
All right. Any questions, or does anybody need to review anything else on the document? It's 264,167,995. Oh.
1,800.
Jeff Barton, Gap Strategies, approximately... You're figuring approximately 1,430, but did you say 14 and a quarter now? On refinement, perhaps 14 and a quarter.
No.
And we can't say it on the ballot, is that correct?
So if you... What we showed you was Exhibit B, which is the voter information document. You can pull it back up. And so what we show you is the calculation for each one, the interest as of today. If you scroll up... No, just stay down in that one section, Tina. Yeah, so but it gives you just... Yeah, just scroll down. It gives you that estimated cost, amortization cost, what it is, the percentage of... That it would include on the bond, and it's broken down in that table, and then the valuation it says. So all of that information, one through eight, is included in the voter information package. But it doesn't tell you, like, overall. But it does tell you the percentage of the maximum thing.
And it has... It's going to have all that on the ballot?
Yeah, so if you look at for that particular proposition, it's estimated that that is a .00053 percent increase or the total valuation of the project. Because I don't do math.
Derek Mitchell with Holland. Mayor, I wanted to make sure it's not going to be on the ballot. It's going to be on the notice that goes out to the public.
That's what I said. It's the voter information document.
Yeah, well, he said ballots. I wanted to make sure.
So there's no... Only if you scroll... If you look at... You want to look at the actual ballot. We chose to show you this so you could see what the voter information document would look like, but on the ballot, can you just scroll up, Tina? Or scroll down? Just right there where it says for or against. Scroll up just a little bit, right there. That's what they see.
Right.
Just that one, that box, for or against, with that language.
So we just have to include that in our voter education because it's not going to be...
So the notice, this Exhibit B, which is what we're looking at right now, that is the notice that gets sent out to voters. That's posted and can be published for information on that long yellow sheet. But this is what they'll see when they walk into the voting booth. Right? Right?
All right, is there a motion on the proposition as presented?
Well, now, before we do that, the manager, in keeping with our tradition, the manager will now read the item. And then you can call for discussion or vote.
Ask the attorney.
Because it's for... You're calling for an election, and because it's recorded in the minutes, no.
Okay, item one.
Counselor to consider approving an ordinance calling a special election for November 4, 2025 to be held within the city of Beaumont, Texas, making provisions for the conduct and the giving of notice of the special election and containing other provisions related thereto in the context of the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
All right, is there a motion for this item?
I make it a motion we approve.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Crenshaw.
Because of how this was grouped, and my concerns that me voting yes would make the public think that I'm in favor of the Riverfront Park extension, I've got to vote against this.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Anybody else? All those in favor of approving this item, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries. All right. We are now to council member comments, and then we will move into the press conference for those that want to attend. So Councilman Crenshaw?
I think I've said enough today.
Councilwoman Sherwood? Councilman Williams?
You know, it's an interesting process to be a part of something in your first three months in office, something that hasn't happened in, you know, 40-plus years. And while, you know, it's no easy task and, you know, I... No perfect way to group these things or pick this apart or pick that apart, but I look at it as a whole, and, you know, I think that we're giving voters an opportunity to pick the direction they want the city to go in. And so I'm happy that the voters will get a say in this, and I look forward to seeing the results.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Councilman Turner?
No comment.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hilliard?
No comment.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Durio?
Yeah, I just want to thank all the citizens that participated today and came up and spoke up. That's how... They're supposed to be a part of this, and I'm glad that they did. And thank you, staff, for... You guys answered a lot of hard questions today and educated us, and appreciate that. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Durio. Madam City Attorney? All right, and just city managers?
Yeah, real quickly, I'd just like to echo. I appreciate Kara and Jeff and Dusty and Derek, but especially all of our city staff who've worked a lot of hours to get us to this point. And I don't think we have any of our bond committee members with us tonight, but I certainly appreciate all the work they did. Oh, Sam's here, Sam Pridgie. But appreciate all the great work the bond committee put into this project to get us to this point.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager?
No comment.
All right. Again, thank everybody for their participation and their hard work. I know this has been challenging, and now we're going to adjourn to the back... Are we still doing the back conference room for the press conference? Thank you.